All righty, good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, January 7, 2019. If you'll all rise and please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll just begin by hoping everybody had a great holiday season, lots of good spirits and good health, I hope. And with that, we'll move right along. So, as some of you may have or may not have known, Selectmen Carpenter has resigned due to personal circumstances, so we are left with the four of us and we will need to elect a new vice chair. So we'll try this again. We weren't very successful the last time, but we'll give it another go.
I'll try it. I, um, I'll make a motion to elect Mike Wood for vice chair.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? All those against? Perfect. Uh, so we'll move right along. Um, is there a... Do we have a recap or the break down of the, um, from last month? I mean, from last... Got it. So the recap warrants from 12-27. We didn't, there was no meeting, but they still had to be signed. We had payroll warrant number 1925 in the amount of $159,538.63. Uh, well, we need, um, Denise, well, we need motions in?
No, because they gave you the authority to sign them, so you're just recapping them for the board.
Terrific. And we have a bill warrant, 1925, $508,889.19, which breaks down as follows. The town was $108,854.05. Water and sewer, $28,766.10. Payroll withholding, $16,425.34. Light bills, $324,888.23. And grants revolving, $29,955.47. Now we'll move into the approval of the warrants. We have a motion to approve payroll warrant number 19-27 in the amount of $144,831.56.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve at second.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Motion to approve bill warrant, 19-27, in the amount of $1,250,203.80, which breaks down as follows. The town, $58,453.52. Water and sewer, $213,038.90. Payroll withholding, $47,900.97. Light bills, $79,205.46. Grants revolving, $12,666.32. Chapter 90, $37,833.90. And our favorite Penn Tucket assessment, $794,972.66.
Motion to approve.
Motion at second.
Seconded.
And any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Terrific. Moving right along, we have the promotion of Charles... Oh, man, you're gonna test me here.
DeRosis.
DeRosis. From cemetery foreman to the position of cemetery superintendent effective January 7, 2019, at the rate of $20 an hour. Town meeting unanimously approved the budget transfer on December 3, 2018, to add the additional funds to the full-time salary line.
I'm seconded.
I'm looking for somebody to... I'm just making a motion first.
I'll make the motion.
All right. You made the motion and Bill Dunn made the second. Any further discussion? Is, uh, step on up. Look, we'd love to hear from you, as always.
Yes. Uh, the reason for this is, um, last year we put in the budget extra money for a clerk, because we weren't sure how this was going to go. Uh, the person we hired as foreman has done a great job, and he's taken over all the clerking duties. He's done, uh, all the computer stuff. We've got a lot of information to go on the computer. We've got the, um, the software for the computer and everything, and we thought we were going to need to have somebody be put maybe down here talking with Denise about it. We were concerned how this was going to get done, but Chuck knows how to do it. He's just taking the bull by the horns. He's doing all the payroll, um, you know, we're signing it, but, I mean, he's doing all the work of, you know, selling the, and the lots. He's already done a lot of the paperwork and, uh, computer entry for the lots and putting them in order and coming up with a, a, a good, uh, plan on how we're going to be able to keep going with this. It was just worth it, and we needed a superintendent. We need somebody with the title of superintendent that can handle the job and do it. Uh, most every public, um, cemetery has, excuse me, a superintendent to do this, so he's in charge of that. He'll be, you know, as foreman, he was, he was working, looking over the workers that we had up there, but now, you know, a superintendent now, he, he can do a little bit more and just report to the commissioners.
Is he here tonight?
Pardon me?
Is he here tonight?
No, he isn't.
I imagine he's pretty tired from all the work he's been doing.
He has been doing a lot of work. If you notice, uh, the cemetery is really looking well. We had a big tree come down over the weekend and working with the, um, he's got a good rapport with the highway department. They came up and helped him, and they got rid of the tree or up to the line. It was actually a neighbor's tree, but it fell on our property. There was no damage to anything, so he was able to clean it up and, and get rid of it. We just cut it to the line. We didn't want to get, uh, as good neighbors.
Awesome.
That was actually the question about some of the fallen limbs and trees that have happened up there, if those were taken care of and what they had been.
And if you notice, um, he's also, he's also picked up piles of leaves that have been in certain areas that were never disposed. He was able to pick that up. Um, I, I suggest, ask if you... I know Eddie's been up there quite a bit. Take a ride through the cemetery and see what the difference has been, um, since Chuck has taken over. It's really been cleaned up. But you've been up there.
I drove up about, uh, a little bit before Christmas, and I was unbelievably, unbelievable smile on my face. Hard time getting that job done up there, and it was a constant fight. And I'll tell you, what a, what a big transformation.
It really is.
Just, just the lawns, the, the lawns, the fertilization and how the lawns look. I mean, it really, really is sharp. You know, I was looking for him, and I was gonna pull over and introduce myself to him and tell him.
Yeah, please do, when you, when you go up there.
He wasn't there when I went up there. I went up like around 5:30 one afternoon, so...
You know, we're fortunate to get him. Um, that particular place is not the most conducive to growing grass.
Right.
Or anything up there.
It looks really good though, for no trees.
It's a terrible, terrible place, you know. Normally, you wouldn't build a, have a cemetery, but it was free land back in 1700 and something, and, and that's why they started it there and just continued. And we've got the new, the new section down back has all been engineered, all been staked out, so, uh, that's done also. And he's also got that in the computer, and, uh, he comes up. I mean, he's got eight years' experience working for the Archdiocese of Boston, taking care of their cemeteries in, in Haverhill, so we're very, very fortunate to get him. We just don't want to lose him.
You were also fortunate with, uh, with Bob, Bob Polozotti.
Yes. Yeah, he was been a big help and, and picked up the slack before we were able to get a full-time foreman.
If he treated you well, you got a good crew.
So now you were able to eliminate the, the clerk and combine these two positions?
Yes.
Basically, he's doing all the clerical and the superintendent of a form.
Yeah, so we don't have to hire another person. He's doing it all, so we have just one person that's going to be responsible for all that.
So even with the increase, you, you're looking at a money saver.
Uh, yeah, in the long run. You know, I, I don't know, um, what else. I mean, we're still gonna put in, at some point in time, we gotta put in for another, you know, another mower. Uh, the mowers we have, they take a beating up there. You know, it's, it's not flat land. It's up and down hills, you know. It, it, they just don't last.
Well, your equipment costs, besides your labor costs, if you're gonna combine two positions, you, you're gonna save money there.
Right.
As long as this guy lasts. We'll talk about equipment later. It's always
Yeah.
A concern, either it's maintenance or new.
Hopefully he'll stay.
In the back, at the bottom, the new section you're talking about. When I was there, I was, I was fighting and fighting and fighting, trying to get that staked out and the pins put in. That's all done now, finally?
Yeah.
Awesome.
That was, we got, we took four, money out of our budget, not our budget, but out of our sale of lots.
Yep.
And, uh, $4,000 from the town. We, we could, uh, at last town meeting last year. And we got this company that does that kind of thing to get it done. It's all been engineered out.
Oh, good.
Uh, we wanna, I wanna meet as soon as we get a new, um, highway superintendent, whatever, I don't know what his title would be, uh, but, uh, we've gotta meet and go over a few things about some of the roadways that really need working, that the town gets paid for, because they are chapter 90 roads, and just a couple of things, you know.
Yeah, I, I was up there recently myself, and it looked, it looked really well. So I don't think there's a problem, so why don't we move the, move the, uh, the matter at hand?
I'm good with it.
Somebody who, uh...
You already have a motion?
Really have a motion?
Yep.
Oh, great. So, all those in favor? Terrific.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've gotta go to another meeting now.
Good luck. Okay, up next, we have the council on aging director to discuss the council on aging capital request, which is for a handicap lift van.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Very well. How are you?
Excellent. Never better.
I like it.
Okay.
So, we put through a request, um, the year before for it to go under fiscal year 19 for a new handicap lift van. We have, but we postponed that because we were at that time seeking a senior center. And so we didn't want to beat up the townspeople by requesting two, two things at the same time. Our focus was a senior center, so we got bumped to this fiscal year. The max we're requesting is $58,000. That's for a 10-passenger van. I had provided some quotes to give you an idea about where we probably would be in that, that number. Um, we currently have a 2011 Ford E350 handicap lift van. Um, that is something we've leased from Merrimack Valley Regional Transit since 2000, um, actually, we took possession in 2010, but it's a 2011. We have currently on it about 58,000 miles. We put on, as you would, you know, doing the math, about 6,800 miles a year. Um, I know it was asked of me when I went before capital improvement last year or the year before, "Why don't you just hold on to such a vehicle for at least 10 years?" Um, he talked about the police vehicles that are utilized and so on and so forth. But theirs, as you know, they run pretty much 24/7. We're funded by the townspeople for van drivers for 26 hours a week. So, we're a little more sporadic than the police, than the police station. Um, the other thing that is somewhat different, um, we don't have backup. So if a cruiser goes down, um, there's always another cruiser to assist them. If a fire vehicle goes down, there's always another vehicle to assist them, but we're sort of on our own. Um, years ago, we received a 2001 Dodge van, uh, through a grant from the Wadley Foundation. Um, that we had for a long time. As it got older and it's outparked, there, you know, as, as with most town vehicles, there are no, um, garage facilities. Um, over time, one thing after another, after another, sometimes it's the handicap lift that went, sometimes it was other mechanical items, could be tires and so on. Much as I really like John McCombsky and Groveland Equipment, who have saved our bacon on numerous occasions, um, I hate the thought of having to go that route again, um, for another few years, because sometimes we're in Boston. Sometimes we're an hour and a half out, like me, to New Hampshire on a recreational trip, or at the Museum of Fine Arts, or, um, at the PBD Essex in Salem. So for those sorts of trips, to be stranded with a, with a mechanical failure is really rough, because I get pressed into service to go pick folks up, as we did once at the Boston Flower Show, uh, on a Friday evening at 8 o'clock. I'm driving into Boston picking up our van driver, um, as the van got towed away. So I think as it's now about, about eight and a half years old, um, that it would be worthwhile to replace it. Um, that's my, that's my position. Um, it's, it's daunting when it goes down. It's not just the one driver, um, but it's often several seniors, sometimes to medical appointments, sometimes recreational, sometimes there's a wheelchair onboard. Um, so when it goes down, it's no joke. It's no joke. So I'm hoping, going forward, um, that the Board of Selectmen acting as capital improvement would approve this, this purchase.
Selectmen Watson, any questions?
Uh, no.
Selectmen Dunn.
Sure. So, the, um, obviously, it's gonna go up to bid.
Right.
You're gonna put the thing up to bid.
Right.
Um, the old van, is that gonna become surplus to the town of Groveland or go back to the Merrimack?
No, correct. It, it's now the, um, possession of the town of Groveland.
Okay. So whatever value we can pull out of that, we'll pull out of that.
Right.
Um, this van that you're showing, this is what you've got in mind?
There, there are three, actually.
Yeah.
All would be fabulous. The, actually, the, the Ford, um, E350
Yeah.
Is a great, is a great vehicle. 10 passengers.
Yeah.
Um, one handicap lift spot. Um, it's, it's been a useful vehicle. That was, that was a fabulous approach. Um, we received that van as a once-a-year lease for a dollar through a group, um, a group grant.
Yeah.
It was a mobility assistance grant, um, that a lot of folks in the Merrimack Valley participated in. Joe Costanzo from Merrimack Valley Regional Transit, um, worked with us to obtain those vans. So we have one, Saltbury has one, shares it also, um, with Newburyport, um, Georgetown, Merrimack, um, and Amesbury as well. Not Amesbury, I take it back.
So have you, have you talked to them over there at all? Because I know they're in a pool.
Have I talked with?
Over like at Merrimack Transit Authority over there?
Yeah, actually, I was just exchanging emails with Joe Costanzo, actually, today.
Okay, because I know a lot of times they're in a pool where it, it's not a used vehicle. It could be a new one, but they can get you the pool price. I don't know if the town, I don't know if Denise can do it or not, but...
I don't know how we would work that.
It's called a pool?
I don't know. We would get state bid pricing.
Oh, you get the state price, okay.
Right, right.
Yeah, all right, so...
But that grant, that grant was terrific, but it's over. Of the last fiscal year, as of July 1st this year, it is ours.
Right, okay.
So it was kind of terrific in the past in that, you know, repairs and that sort of thing could be done by MVRTA.
Yeah.
We'd bring it there, um, sit with it until it was repaired and, and get it back.
Right.
But that's gone.
And the van that you, the van we currently have now is a much bigger van. It's a, it's what they call a one-ton size van. It's, you know, it's...
It's a 10-passenger.
Yeah.
It's what you see, actually, throughout Haverhill and...
Yeah, no, I, I know. But is that the size you ultimately really want?
Yes, yes.
Or the smaller one than, like...
No, the 10-passenger. That's useful.
That's really what you want.
Especially when, especially when we do day trips into cultural sites.
And that's the one you priced out?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right, I'm good.
Selectmen Wood?
Yeah. Um, thank you for the background on the vans.
Sure.
Um, a couple of things. So, nobody wants to see the van break, broke down with elderly people in it.
Right.
Nobody wants you to drive to Boston.
Thank you.
5:00, 10:00 at night on Friday night, going to pick down, pick up a van. Um, the problem is, and this is no, by no means an inclination of the way I stand on it, the problem is, is that every year, we're forced up against the wall with the budget.
Right.
So we have to make tough decisions on keeping the budget balanced and where that money's gonna go, whatever money we have.
Right.
Um, so could you tell me exactly what is wrong with the current vehicle that's eight years old?
Well, it's...
That hasn't been already repaired?
It's now at about 58,000 miles.
Yeah.
So it's 60,000 miles. It goes in for a major service, and that, that clocked out at about $3,900.
Okay.
So that sort of thing going forward, I suspect, will be an issue.
But would that $4,000 get you another year out of it?
Yes, of course. Yes.
So if we had to, we could put four or five or $6,000 into it, get another year, get past some of these other hurdles that we gotta get into.
We could.
And then we, I mean, I don't want to push it out, and I don't want to see you go into Boston late at night, and I don't want to see anyone stranded up in Maine somewhere.
I hear you.
But if we can make it so it's a lot more cost-effective for the town, and we can get some of these other hurdles taken care of, and get another year out of it, because it is only eight years old.
Right, right, right.
I have a car that's eight years old.
Right. But it, but it's a little different than a, than a private passenger vehicle.
Right. Yeah, it takes more of a beating. I get that.
Yeah.
Um, so that's just something that I want to point out, that if we could put some money towards it and get another year out of it, that might be a prudent way to go. Um, but again...
Another suggestion would be casting no aspersions against fire and police. We could also bump a cruiser till next year. It's just a thought.
Yeah. That's it.
Um, yeah, uh, I know it's a Ford and all, but 58,000 miles doesn't seem like a lot of miles.
No, it's, it's not. But they don't, they don't traditionally rack up big miles. For instance, MVRTA, they swap them out every four years. And that's, you know, that's, that's how we ended up owning ours.
Uh, uh, they, they have a way bigger budget than we do.
Yes, they do.
Um, so it's easier for them to swap them out every, as opposed to us. But 58,000 miles, you know, in today's day and age, even though we don't use it a lot, 6,800 miles a year, doesn't seem like a lot of miles on a car. The last four vehicles I've owned have put well over 250,000 miles on each one of them. Granted, we use them in different capacities, so, you know, it, I'm not comparing apples to apples. I get it.
You kinda can't, because it's not, it's not a single passenger.
Correct.
You're the only person probably that drives vehicles.
Yeah, I wish I was.
We rotate, we rotate out about three drivers, so that, that comes to bear as well.
Absolutely, different driving habits. But you said it needs a 60,000-mile service for $3,900. At 6,800 miles per year, um, it's almost another 10 years before it needs another 60,000-mile service. Now, even if we were to put $10,000 and could give this van a complete overhaul, that's one-fifth of the cost of a new van. Um, and, and basically, we still have a, a van that's, that's, it's, has a few years, but it's not very old in miles.
How is the interior?
Fine. It's fine.
It is.
What, what, what'll be an issue and what was an issue in the old van is rust.
Well, it's a Ford. It's got rust.
And we live in New England.
Right.
They're all gonna rust.
You're probably driving Hondas. This is, this is, this is a Ford. Casting, again, no aspersions. It's a Ford. Um, for instance, we got a bid from a company, Ashley, out of Haverhill. Um, I think it's, I think it's Royale, or Royale Limo. And, um, and they, they, they sell Mercedes. And I'm like, "Can you imagine if I came before you and requested that?"
Was that the $77,000?
Yeah.
How is the rust on it now?
It's getting, it's getting rusty around, um, rear wheel wells and rear doors, the rear passenger doors, the handicap lift door. So that, that does occur.
And we're going to, the proposal is to buy another Ford van?
Right. Because that's by and law. I mean, or the other alternative is, is often a Dodge, because those seem to lend themselves to handicap trans...
Wasn't it the Dodges that had problems with the police cars?
Yeah.
The transmissions were, were brutal, and they switched over.
So I'm, I'm just saying, you know, as a general rule, foreign makes are not usually, um, an option for us as, um, as, you know, low bidders. They don't usually come in that way. Um...
And GMC? I mean, that's a, that's a...
I don't know. That wasn't, that wasn't part of the mix.
Oh, okay.
That I, that I received for, for...
An estate bid. GMC makes, basically, trucks.
Most vehicles on state business. Where are the larger options that we can buy from?
True. Now, is this something that you'll be deciding, that you'll be deciding this evening? I noticed later in the agenda, um, it indicated, uh, CIC suggestions would be voted on this evening?
Yes, the bylaw requires a capital improvement vote, um, by, I think, the 10th of January. So it's on their agenda to vote tonight.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just wondering, and I hate to throw good money after bad, believe me, I'm the last one to do it, um, if it isn't more prudent right now to, to throw in that 3,800, 4,000, even if it was $5,000 to keep that van going and get it up and running in good mechanical shape, so it's not gonna break down, and that's the last thing I want, is a, is a van load of elderly folks that, uh, you know, they're getting close to their medication time, stranded somewhere miles away from here. It's not a good situation for you.
Right, you are.
It's not a good situation for them.
It's, it's your decision. You know, it's the townspeople's money. Um, it is absolutely, you know, your decision. If, if we want to flog it forward for another year, again, you know, that, that's your call.
Can you, can you lease a vehicle? I'm, I'm not talking long-term. I'm talking, let's just say that thing went down for a week or two. Can you lease a vehicle to fill in for that, or can you get a vehicle to fill, fill that in?
We haven't, we haven't had that occur so far.
Well, what I'm thinking is...
In case of emergency?
No. I'm thinking is, if we took this van and we took it out of service for a couple of weeks, and we said we're gonna put $5,000 or $6,000 into that and give it soup to nuts go over, can you have another vehicle in place?
I'm sure that's possible. I mean, I think it would be worthwhile checking with Joe Costanzo over at Merrimack Valley Regional Transit. He has kind of a bank of, of vehicles that are not necessarily available to small towns, but it might be something, you know, that we would have access to.
Right. Well, I know it sounds like we need to make a decision tonight, but, I mean, I would throw out there that we, that we give the, you know, cap it at a certain dollar amount, send it over, have a, have a, a good overhaul done on it, buy some more time with it, and if they can get a vehicle to fill in for.
It would save...
I mean, $5,000 is gonna help us a lot, where...
It's one-tenth of the cost.
Right.
It, it, it's an extraordinary help right now.
Right.
Uh, yes, Selectmen Watson?
Do you have, uh, do you, do you have a list of defects on, on a vehicle?
Right now?
Yeah.
No, just what's coming up for the, the 60,000 service? Oh, in terms of, you know, do we need to replace tires and that sort of thing?
Yeah, right.
No?
No.
Well, we, we, we do not.
You don't know what that 3,800 includes?
Oh, yeah, I do. Hang on. That's, um, that's ball joint replacements, fuel pump replacement, brake and rotor replacement, and head gasket replacement. Also, you know, spark plugs for it. And again, it's not a, it's not a regular vehicle. It's not a regular car, so the costs are higher. There's, there are double back, back tires, so, you know, there's that sort of thing. So when, when a tire goes, it's, it's a pricey venture, and we've been fortunate, and then MVRTA has, has covered that for us up until we lost lease of it.
If that vehicle, if that vehicle needs head gaskets, I was a truck mechanic before I owned my own business. I have 13 vehicles. If that thing needs a head gasket, and it really needs a head gasket, it's not worth saving that vehicle. I've never seen a vehicle you do heads on and have it last a long period of time. I mean, I don't know. Someone could have wrote that on a piece of paper, but...
This was just the estimates from Ford on an E350.
Yeah. Is it smoking? Do you know when it started, does it smoke?
No, no.
So I don't know if it would be a head gasket or smoking, but I'm just saying, sometimes...
That was, that was in blue.
Okay.
So perhaps, perhaps that's an item.
So who, who looked, who looked the vehicle over to, to say that it needed a head gasket, or is that, that's part of the 60,000-mile?
Nobody, nobody, that's just, that's, that's just an estimate of what could occur at a 60,000-mile service on a handicap lift van.
So, so there's, you, you don't even know if it needs head gaskets? That's just...
No, I'm just, no, as I said, that was, that was a possibility. But for instance, brake rotor replacement, fuel pump, ball joints, those sorts of things are what apparently ordinarily come up on a 60,000, which is how that came up with the 3,900.
Typical wear and tear.
For, you know, for a 60,000-mile vehicle.
For most any vehicle. It's a typical wear and tear, other than the fuel pump.
Right. And knock on wood, you know, we've been fortunate so far. But it's at this point in the life's lifespan of a, of a vehicle when things start to happen.
So the additional $2,000 should buy brand-new tires as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, probably.
Oh, those were 400, FYI, those were 400 a pot. And there are two on this side and two on this side.
400 a pot.
So there's, there's $600. I mean, $1,600 for, for your back tires.
Is that right?
You can get, I don't want to sit here and play...
Excuse me.
I, I'm sorry.
I, I just feel like I can help you guys.
You, you need to be recognized at the podium if...
Can I help?
The thing is...
I can help you guys. I mean, you could be here, like, involved with me on your board, I believe. Um, my name's Glenn Allen. I currently, uh...
He needs to re...
Yeah, could you, uh, state your name and address at the podium, please?
My name is Glenn Allen. I'm currently the owner for the next hour or so of ARI My name is Glenn Allen. I'm currently the owner for the next hour or so of A I R E Auto Sales. I've currently been in this town for many years now in the business. I do know a lot about the auto business. I sold a vehicle to a man on the board here, he could tell you. I own a sixty-thousand dollar Ford outside with sixty thousand miles, and I just did my service recently. I have an F three fifty.
Okay, so you have a big honking truck.
Yeah, but what I could tell you, a lot of this is, the Ford stuff is, they're, they're, they're giving you scare tactics, throwing all the recommendeds at you. I understand what this is, but I, you ain't gonna need all this, I promise you that. Now, I'd be willing to help you guys out free of charge and try to direct her if she wants in any way to try to service your truck and bring it back to health without spending all that money. Because I can direct you in the right way. You don't need all these things they're telling you, it's, it's.
This is just anticipation.
Yeah, no, I know. But I think what happens is when you go to the Ford store, I just got my service done recently too, up at Auto Fair. They handed me this big thing, yo, we recommend all this. My truck still drives like it did when I bought it brand-new a few years ago.
Again, as I was saying, this is, this is a series of what else?
But you could save, and, and I understand the town just can't afford to dump out that kind of money on a truck that's still got a lot of life in it. That's the thing, sixty thousand's nothing anymore. He's right, they go two hundred, three hundred thousand all the time.
Except this is a handicap lift van.
Yeah. No, I know what it is, I've had them. Yeah, I've sold them, I've had plenty of them over the years. Yeah. But I mean, if you need, if you guys need some help directing, Eddie knows me, I mean, I'm, I'm a good guy and I would help to, I'd give you guys some advice and direct you in the right way. So you don't have to go and spend all that kind of money.
Oh, we appreciate the offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'd be willing to make a motion, and I'll make a motion that we spend up to five thousand dollars to have the van have a once-over. But before we do that, if it's possible, if it's possible, take it to the town mechanic and have the town mechanic look it over.
Who is our town mechanic?
Billy Green.
Oh, all right.
Okay, let him, let him look it over, let him come up with a list of what it needs, so we have a second opinion to look at it.
Oh, Billy Green, I trust that man.
So he'll give us a good, honest opinion, what he thinks it needs, and he's a Ford guy. Let him look it over, and then we'll put a cap at five thousand.
But just, just, just for my own edification, so does, does our highway department service town vehicles besides their own?
No.
No, no, what I'm just saying, if we can get him to look at it, to get a second opinion to look at it.
A once-over, as it were.
Right.
We don't want, we, the last thing anybody wants i- is to throw good money after bad, like I said before. So if this Mr. Green comes back with the estimation that you're throwing this money away to spend five thousand dollars, then we have to go a different route. But if he comes back in his estimation and says you should be able to get another five, ten years out of this van with just a few minor tweaks and some new tires.
That's a useful approach.
And we can save a lot of money, and, and that's for years.
My primary concern is safety and just making sure that nobody's stranded by the side of their own.
As is ours. As is ours.
Okay.
That's, that's not a bad suggestion. I'd, I'd like to, to have him take the, the dollar amount out, have, have Billy Green take a look at it and, and give us an estimate on, on what it's gonna cost, to, what it needs, what it's gonna cost to repair it, and then.
We should probably do that rapidly before the snow flies, and he's too busy to, to take a peek.
Well, if we, i- if we appropriate up to a certain amount of money now, then the repairs can, can take place immediately without having to come back.
It's, it's not till July first.
Where you get five thousand dollars from if you're doing it in this fiscal year?
I thought you were gonna write us a check.
So if we're appropriating for next fiscal year, then we can add it into the budget requests. But if we're doing it in this fiscal year, you need a source of funds.
But at least at this point, you know, to have, to have Bill take a look at it and sort of make an assessment, that gives us, you know, months to go.
Correct. They don't need to vote on a dollar amount tonight, because you could add it into your budget recommendations as we build them in the next few months.
But at least he, he could give us a, a knowledgeable assessment.
And you wanna make a final amendment?
Why don't you withdraw your amendment and do.
I'll withdraw my amendment, my motion, and I'll make a motion to have the town mechanic do a once-over on the vehicle and come back to us and let us know what the vehicle needs.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion is seconded, any further discussion?
What was that? What are we, what are we talking about? Is this gonna take a look at it now?
We're gonna have the, the town mechanic put the vehicle over and.
Give us an assessment.
Assessment of what he thinks it needs, or what it.
Of its current condition and its.
Mechanical appraisal, if you will.
There you go. And its estimated useful life going forward. I think that would help too. So that's what we're voting on. All good?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor? Terrific.
Thank you.
All right.
See you next year.
Hopefully not, hopefully, hopefully we get some good news and, and they say, hey, that, that van should last another twenty-five years. I know, I know.
Thank you.
Wishing doesn't make it happen, but, okay, next we have the recreation committee discuss the pines and project update and schedule.
Good evening, Mike Oden, One Valley Farm Road. So, I don't know exactly what you wanna cover, so last time we talked, we talked about the fact that right now, i.e. it's winter, not much's gonna happen anyways, but what we're waiting on is the fact that we are without water, and without water, we can't, so for the field that's down there, the field that was graded, added six inches of topsoil to it, leveled, and temporary seed was put down, so by a volunteer to put down. So we had a basin that'll hold it until we can get proper irrigation in. We've gone out to bid for irrigation, it came back with two bids, but neither one was very thorough. So we pulled the bids on that. So we need to go back to the board again for that. So what we've done is we have asked for funding for additional money to be able to finish that project. So that's one element. Playground element, as we talked about last time we got together, was the fact that that, that did get submitted for funding as well. So where, you know, if that's approved by the voters, then, you know, then we'll have appropriations to replace the playground, which is, as we know, is in terrible disrepair. Into the proposal of both, I did put, Bill, I think you had mentioned the gazebo, well, not a gazebo, the, the campy, that the roof needs to be replaced, and that's what funds in for that, to cover that as well. So that's where we stand right now, is we're kind of in a, in a holding position, because A, the bids that we got back were insufficient to do what we need to do, and the company that had originally given us the bid, unfortunately, I'm unable to get them to call me back, and I don't know why. But it is what it is. Either they decided they weren't interested anymore, or the gentleman that I had worked with has left the firm, so maybe something went on, I'm speculating only on that. So we're, we're kind of in a, in a holding pattern right now from that perspective. The well that was dug and is down there can't possibly handle the water requirements for the existing field, never mind adding additional fields to it, so.
You can't use a tank for that system?
You can, yeah, but the way it was described to me is you would have to pump into the tank all night long, I mean, all day long, and then all the time that it's pulling for, to water the fields, it would have to still start filling itself, because it would drain down enough. And it would still take, of course, four days to water the, the entire field to get that done.
All right. So let me, let me see, and I'm not gonna sit here. Number one, I don't agree, and I'm not saying it to you, I'm not saying anything, I'm saying I don't agree taking tack there and then saying it's no good, because it is good. It is. What can happen is you put a shed down there, you put a holding tank in the shed, if we got a holding tank for three hundred gallons, we can get one for a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, five hundred, a thousand, whatever, we can get a tank. You put a tank in there, what happens is you fill the tank.
No, I understand how it works.
Let me just, please, let me carry through, because I'll feel good getting it carried through. So you fill the tank full of water, okay? As soon as that sprinkler system turns on and that, that zone comes on and starts drawing water out of that tank, the well is putting it right back in. So that tank will never go dry, it's always being replenished by the well. The reason the tank is there is to hold the capsidity of water to water the field, because maybe the well doesn't have enough down there. Now it's up top here, but this is enough to keep bringing this in. It will never go dry. It can be done, I'm willing to do it. If your board or whoever wants to let me help you do it, I'm willing to do it, and I will get it done. The Bagnell School, we were borderline. You probably heard a lot of criticism about that. It works fine. What they did is they put skip zones in, they had, let's say, three zones went on, they skipped a zone, they put three, they skipped a zone. Yes, it's a bigger project over there, it can be done. It needs to be done with a storage tank. And I can guarantee you this, for probably no more than, no more than twelve thousand dollars, you can get a shed, you can get the, the well tank that I'm talking about. We already had a price somewhere for a pump, I don't know where that went, but there was a pump that was already bid on that well that was drilled, and I think you can get the job done. And I definitely think you can get it done, where you're gonna water your field, and then later on, another field could be watered. But it's gotta be a big enough tank, state-line irrigation in Tinsborough, Mass., the lady will come down, she'll talk to you guys, she'll say, yep, I think you need five hundred gallons. I just did one on Jeremy Way in South Groveland, brand-new housing development, the guy called me, he said, my sprinkler system doesn't run, I'm having a problem. I said, whoa, whoa, listen, we're gonna go in your, they sold you a hundred-gallon baffle tank in your basement, let's put in two fifty, your system's gonna run. We put the two fifty tank in there, he, no problems, everything worked fine. That's what has to be done. And you can get the job done.
No, I, I don't disagree with the process to do it, Bill. The problem is a couple of fault. One is, A, the way it was described to me and done mathematically for the number of heads required down there, it would, it would basically be pumping almost twenty-four hours a day, and the likelihood of that well lasting a long time to do that is, is not very high. So you put a lot of money in it, and we already know that, that, that area is already strained for water, for the depth that's in it already. It's not, for the depth of that tank, for that well, it's not really drawing much to start with.
Did you talk to the well guy that drilled it?
I did not.
I did. He guarantees me that that well will, will water those fields, and just what I talked to you about. I mean.
I'd rather have a third-party opinion on that.
Maybe you have to get a third-party opinion, but when he was all done, when, when he was all done doing that system, he had to have brought the water up, and he had to have told somebody in the town how many gallons a minute that thing was producing.
And that's what I used to have the estimates done originally.
That estimate was done based on that well that's there now. Now you're gonna increase your flow and all your other stuff by putting that tank in.
No, I understand that. But the issue also is, Bill, we have another well that's down that's failed. So we have other fields that aren't watered, nor is the town hogged spotted. So we were looking to try to do all of it in one fell swoop with pulling out of the river and not.
My job here is to try and save the taxpayer's money, I think we can do it, what I'm talking about.
And I'm not trying to spend the taxpayer dollar frivolously. I pay taxes just as well as you do. So I don't wanna pay any more than I already am. I think we're already high enough in the town.
I agree.
Did they happen to tell you, and this is ignorance on my part.
Yeah, yeah.
Did they happen to tell you how you can drill multiple wells next to a river and have no water?
It, it depends on the vein, is what it was described to me. It depends on, because if you think about what's, what was pulled out of there, right, over the years, it's been sand, right?
Right.
So sand doesn't hold water. And, and the problem is, there's a layer down there, two different well guys described it to me, there's a layer in that, that soil down deep that has shale in it. And the shale, what happens is when you draw too much water out of a well, the shale collapses and falls into the bottom of the well. It starts causing problems with sediment in the wells. So it's a combination of the fact that the soil is, is very porous, so water doesn't stay in it, and secondly, because of the shale in there, that you got a complex problem because of that.
So what was the solution, drill another well?
Pull out of the river.
Which was the original suggestion three years ago.
Correct. And, and I did not, it's not like I went and.
No, that's not your fault, but that was, I think I brought it up three years ago, why don't we do what Penn Tucket did?
Right.
And that would have saved us years of headaches.
And can that be done at this end of the river with the, with the current down at Penn Tucket? They have a little basin that, that gets sucked out of like a little area where the current isn't bad. Up here, isn't the current too bad to put that out there?
It's not. The guy that, that I had come, that one, that originally bid for us, he went down and he took a look at it, they put these in before, and he said, no, you could actually pull from that. He actually, you know, dug down through the grass and got down to the river's edge to see. Because there's an area where the river turns there, where the water's coming.
And if the tide goes down, there's still plenty of water there in that area?
He said there is.
I don't know.
An electrical cord and a sun pump.
I'm good, thanks. I know.
So, Watson?
I'm, I'm also.
My question's going in a different direction.
Okay.
I, I guess, I wanna understand the formation of the recreation committee and what their original charge was. And what you, before you took on all this pines, what did the recreation committee see as their duties and obligations and responsibilities?
Well, primarily, it was for softball and basketball. So for years, the recreation committee has, has run the town softball league and has run the, the town basketball league.
And both boys and girls?
Correct. Well, for softball, it's girls.
For softball, right, my, my bad, my bad. And for, for basketball, it's both, boys and girls. And this is ages?
For, for, well, thank you.
K D.
K D.
K D. And the basketball, is that known as, as recreational basketball?
Correct.
And so the funds coming in from, from these sources, are they through user fees, participation fees, registration fees? Registration fees, both in softball and basketball. And those fees are then used to pay for?
Equipment, umpires, uniforms, referees.
And so these two organizations operate differently than, say, Groveland Youth Soccer, or Groveland Baseball League, or Penn Tucket Babe Ruth League, for example, that, that, where those are autonomous five oh one C three organizations, standalone, have nothing to do with the town. These are more town-owned, would you say?
Town-run.
Town-run. Is there any been, any talk about splitting off and, and, and as separate entities into, you know, Groveland Softball League is a separate five oh one C three organization where, you know, it, it's, it's autonomous, it's, it's, it's run more like the youth, the soccer and the baseball leagues?
Well, we don't have, we don't, we don't receive any money from the town now for activities, or it's, it is self-funded from that perspective. So it's not, it's not like taxpayer dollars goes toward funding it or subsidizing it. It's all self-funded. We do fall under the umbrella of the town for, you know, for, through insurance coverage, but we do buy insurance for it separately as well with, with their coaches, players, and, and umpires, and referees in basketball. It's a possibility, I mean, we've, we've not gone down that avenue, we're not sure why we would need to or want to, but that's, you know, certainly something that could be discussed.
I, I, I'm just wondering only because I know the other organizations are almost completely self-funding, where these don't seem to be.
Bill, to be clear, we don't take any, there's no taxpayer dollar that pays for either one of these leagues.
So all the facilities, all, everything used is, is funded through?
User fees.
User fees.
Correct.
So the lights are also user fee-based, that, like the G B L, they have their own account, they pay their lights, whatever they turn on their lights, whatever their electricity, electricity bill is, they get a bill.
Basketball for the, the, to, to, to the school system if they require it. We have paid external, in the past, external gyms as well for that. Ford, the fields down here, a lot of the upkeep of the fields is, in fact, the majority of it, Dan does a great deal of that.
Oh.
Take care of the field, so we.
You don't have to sell me on that, I've seen his work first, and he also works on, on the baseball field as well.
I mean, so that's, I mean, that's all volunteer labor that does all that, you know, has taken care of building, originally building the dugouts, grading out the fields originally down there, that was all volunteer labor, and it is volunteer labor to maintain it now as well.
Right, no different than the other organizations that use Washington or Shanahan, right?
Correct, correct. So it's not taxpayer dollar that pays for that, that stuff to go.
So now, with that as your original charge, how did you, how did that expand into this pines project?
Well, the pines was.
Was the recreation committee asked to take on these?
Yes, we were.
You were?
Yeah.
Years ago, too many years ago.
So that's how we've got to where we are today, basically. Your, your charge has been expanded over the years, your role as you've seen it has been expanded.
Take on the, you know, because to us, it's important, and what we've all volunteered our time for over the years, is for the youth, right? So we started a program that was, had been scoped out, laid out, but wasn't known to run it. So we said we would help, you know, promote and take on the responsibility of pulling together the, the ability to put another field in down there, and now, you know, through help of a, of another volunteer, put, put in a playground. So it's just to help promote overall activity for, for youth in the town.
Right, and, and I'm just trying to get a historical background of, of where we started and where we've come to today.
Sure.
Because it was really kind of vague to me how we got from softball and, and basketball to a project that is.
I think honestly, the, it was all town from, from way back. I mean, I've been part of it since my kids were little, and they're, they're well out of school now. But, but, so that, that was from a long time ago, and the other leagues were starting, really starting out. Baseball kinda had their own league, I don't really know the foundation of baseball to start with. But we, we had talked early on about merging together and working together, and we didn't, we have worked on, you know, sharing fields and that kind of stuff over the years. But it's not. But it's not been something that, um, really made sense to do in the past. But it was more to try to help, you know, get these two programs off the ground and, and make them operate. And they've operated very successfully over the years with, with, um, thousands of kids that have gone through it over the years, through the programs.
And then now, the rec committee funds are held with the town and, and, you know? So how, 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 how would the, how would the funds handle? How, how, how would, who manages the funds? Who's in control of, of the funds? Who's, who's, um, F I N or, or social are you using? Who's the treasurer of this organization?
Well, Pam is our treasurer.
So Pam, you control all the funds? And E I, you're using your social as
No, it's just in a limbo.
It's in a, and it can't be in a limbo, cause now with the banking regulations, nothing is in a limbo. Either you have a social security number, an F I N number, you don't do banking.
A million years ago, it was under the town.
Oh, can you go to the podium? I'm sorry. My bad.
Okay. Team Black, U two twenty school street. Um, years ago, it was under the town. And we just had a separate account. It was started long before I was treasurer, and we actually had two accounts. The reason they had let us do it initially was because we, you know, the refs want their checks, the umps want their checks that day. So that was originally why I think it was started, but this was all before I was doing it. And it's just sort of been in limbo since.
Okay, um, so the, the
And Denise and I have discussed this in the past.
So the account that you use is currently using the town's F I N number as, as it's, do we know?
We don't think so.
We don't think so.
Oh, my God.
And we actually don't have a problem if we can figure out how to have checks in these people's hands. We're, a lot of nights, we don't know who is going to be the ump or the ref. And so that's always been a, a sticking point in all this, because they do demand a check in their hand.
Forty years, I know that. I, I can't believe you got these people to take a check. Believe me, most of them want cash or they won't do the game. Um, so you're lucky they're in that respect, that they're taking a check. Um, so
So that I don't know. I mean, I work in Blox Street, and we have, I have a gift account there that I can actually get a check advance on, so that maybe we need to look into something like that.
So on, on the check, it, it, it says, you know, who is it from?
Groveland Recreation. Penn Tucket.
Groveland Recreation.
I'll call Penn Tucket tomorrow and find out.
Okay. But do you think there is a way, Denise, we could do that, that we could have a checking account?
So again, I don't know of any town, I mean, a gift account is not illegal. They're not gifts. I don't know of any town that cuts checks on demand for umpires. They all go through their regular warrant process and go through the same processes everybody else.
But I don't know how they that's not the, the case we weren't into.
No, it, most, most leagues, the umpires require payment of their, of their own service.
Right, and that's why most of the leagues have turned themselves into self-running, uh, five oh one C threes because they have to pay cash to these umpires and officials, or they won't do the game. Believe me, I've seen it. Uh, you try to give them a check, and they just look at you like you've got seventeen heads, and they say, I'm not taking that.
We've never had that issue.
You're lucky.
So, to try and go back a little slower that you started out with. It seems like the charge of the rec board, or rec committee, or whatever, was for a couple things. Couple smaller softball, whatever it was you guys talked about.
Well, initially, Bill, it was a little bigger. Initially, we did run the summer base, the summers
And Groveland Day.
Playground, and Groveland Day.
So
We did used to run dances and
Yeah, okay.
Different events. It's just monetarily wise, these things were killing us.
Right. So, what I was saying is, the problem you have with the umps and checks and everything else, what I think what Bill's alluding to, if you guys got a five oh one C, whatever that is, for that end of that stuff, and then we refocused onto a rec I'm not saying you guys, and please, don't take this out of here that I'm saying anything wrong. A rec committee that would overlook the town, overlook the town in a bigger, broader sense, you know what I'm trying to say?
Or like an athletic committee.
Something. I mean, something that we could turn around and let you guys do your five oh one C thing. You've got your money for your umps. This poor man's not down there every single weekend volunteering his time and what have you, um, or maybe he still does it, but I, I mean, I've said it all along, we need more direction. And I'm not saying you guys aren't doing it.
But you've also got two of us that haven't had children in the school system in a million years, too.
And I still do.
And Dan's still in the middle, but you know, do we wanna take on the work of becoming a five oh one C? You know, we, we don't even have kids.
Right, right.
Well, with the basketball, probably not. With the softball, it'll be a different thing. But I think what Sleckman Dunn is alluding to is, is the fact that a lot of us are coming to, um, the realization that I think the town is getting to the point where it needs a point person for these activities, and maybe it needs to be a salaried position. So that softball, and basketball, and baseball, and soccer can contact one person when they need grass cut, or they need a light fixed, or they need a sprinkle head, uh, taken care of. It's become too much, I think, for any one person. I, I know I get there pretty early on a Saturday morning, at seven o'clock for the game, and Dan has already done the field, cut the grass, put the machines away. Um, so I don't know what time he gets there, whether he works with one of those helmets with the light on or something.
Some issues to clarify it. Uh, Dan Stewart, um, Groveland Recreation, for Matthew Drive. I am also the president of the Kansas County Women's Softball League. I've been so for over four or five years. Um, we take great pride in taking care of the pines, and yeah, I probably spend about fifteen hours a week down there from, from March, end of March until Billy had fall ball for the, um, for the boys, uh, which I was more than happy to do the field because it needed the work. Um, the town does a good job of fertilizing and, and mowing. Um, I pick up all the trash, and the dog poops are in around the backstops and the batting cages, so you know, it's a lot of volunteer work. I don't mind doing it. Should it be a salary position? Probably. Uh, but again, now we're dipping into taxpayer money where we're trying to get the place set up. Um, so I'm willing to stay on the volunteerism for another year, a, as we can work this out. Um, you know, uh, there's a lot of waste down there, too. We, we have two toilets that we pay three hundred dollars and a piece, I think, a month, that we should be using the regular toilets, and then we're gonna need someone to be able to clean those bathrooms. So there is a lot of issues to be addressed. Um, we get a lot of the coaches and the parents involved, uh, as the, as the rec committee does. Uh, even the Babe Ruth, they got involved, and they help out. They donate things and, and they donate money to advertise signs, so I think there's, there's a lot of good things that we are doing. Does the town need a manager or a, a field coordinator person? Probably, uh, especially as we expand these fields. Um, you know, and, and I know we have other volunteers down there, like Shay, uh, is part of Condon.
Shay Condon.
He, he's part of that field. He does a lot down there. They rent their own lights and, and, and they're, you know, they're a private organization. Um, and I wanna address that. We, we've always talked about that. We've, Pam has talked about it with Denise. Uh, if it's necessary, I think we can do it. Um, I know the soccer does it. I know the, uh, baseball at Washington Park does it. Um, but you have to understand where we come from. We're, we have the lowest cost softball and basketball program out of the three towns. Uh, it draws a lot more children. Uh, we get a lot more volunteerism that way, and, and it, it really helps bring the kids out. Uh, and we wanna maintain that, and it's been part of our success. West Newbury softball program failed, uh, folded three years ago. Um, too expensive, nobody wanted to run the program, nobody wanted to take care of the fields. Uh, the town doesn't take care of the fields behind the page school. Um, but on a monthly basis, and they need to be taken care of almost every other day as the kids are playing. To make sure that there's, you know, that, there's no trash, the fields are groomed so they don't break an ankle, there's no dog poop all over the place. And we've worked very hard at, at keeping it nice. Um, and I know the town's rented it out to A A U programs and other things to make money, and I, my other suggestion is people have spent some money for advertising, we have not put the signs up, so, so that needs to happen. Uh, and I know you've already approved both baseball and softball fences to have the advertising signs up. I think there's over five, six thousand dollars there for the spring, um, from the advertisers, and that, that could go to the field's maintenance, the fat fertilizer, and the mowing, and then what have you. So, I mean, we do work behind the scenes on this. It just seems that we don't communicate enough and
Not at all.
We're not on the same page, and I, and, and I'm willing to be the point person on that, and be the temporary volunteer down there, which I am already. Um, to, to make sure it's a nice place. The compliments we get for both the baseball, softball, and the whole facility is unbelievable from all the towns. And that's all the Cape and League towns around here. They, they love it. They love coming there. Um, it's a beautiful place. You got bald eagles flying over the field. You have a beautiful river. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's just a nice place. It's a good location. Um, and I appreciate the, the speed bumps that are put in. That's gonna greatly help us in the spring, so whoever, whoever got that done, that's, that's huge. Thank you.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, that's huge. Uh, you don't know how many times I've seen cars flying through, little kids walking through the parking lot. You know, it's dangerous, so now they can't fly through the parking lot.
They won't fly through anymore. I went down it, cause my kid was playing football the other day, and I forgot. Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I, my head hit the top, and I said, oh, I forgot about these speed bumps and
Guilty as charged, Bill.
So Denise
It's gonna be great.
So, what I'm suggesting has nothing to do with taking any volunteerism, not, not, um, trying to throw a wrench in or anything like that.
Sure.
Leave the place the way it is. To take the confusion of the money and all this confusion, if you get the five oh C one or that is
Yeah.
That money, that's taken care of. The sign money, we went to town meeting, we've just got appropriated to have an account, to put the sign money into account, and I'm gonna be hopefully you know, working to get more signs and what have you down there
Okay.
To try and get some money for the fields. My, all I'm saying is, it's running a company, and you, you're an insurance guy, without having someone at, at the helm.
Sure.
And I'm just saying, it might only be ten hours a week. It might be fifteen. I don't even know if we can afford it.
Sure.
But we need someone at the helm that might go to and says, listen, I'm having a problem. Denise is a very busy lady, and she's already delegating who can have the fields, who can't. That's something she shouldn't be doing. We should have a point person for that. That's all I'm saying.
This would not be an elected position. It would be a selectman-appointed position, correct?
That's what we're heading.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can put me on the table. There's other parents that would volunteer to do it as well. Um, yeah, we, we used to, but now the leagues do it.
And where we are heading, where we're trying to head, is we're trying to head for D P W. So that ultimately would probably fall under the, part of that would fall under the D P W.
Sure.
Supervisor, commissioner, whatever you wanna call them, and, and a lot of that volunteerism would hopefully come, you know, be taken down to a, a level, you know what I mean?
Sure, sure.
But, but I don't want you guys to think that we're up here trying to take anything away from you. We're not. We, we love the volunteers. We love all the We're trying to make it easier, flow easier. That's all that we're trying to do.
Totally understand.
Okay.
And, and we're trying to accomplish all the goals that we've set forward ahead of us, because I want nothing more than those bathrooms to be open in the spring. I want nothing more than the irrigation system to work in the spring so the football kids can maybe use that in the fall, if not at le, at the latest next fall. Yeah, and the soccer kids can use it the following spring. Nobody here wants anything more than that, to, to, to see all these goals and plans that we've laid out come to fruition. And, and, and my mission to get you folks here in front of us was, how do we help you push this ball across the goal line? So that we can all sit back and look at the proud work that all, everybody's had a hand in, and say, what a great facility we have here. So I, I think
I think what has to happen, and I'm not trying to be a jerk when I say this. People have to be willing to let change happen. You know, I mean, we, we, we sometimes don't look out of the box, you know what I mean? And even with us, you, you sometimes, you gotta look out and say, okay, let's see if we can make change. Let's do the five oh one C, you know what I mean? Let's try to get change, and let's try to, you know what I'm trying to, let's try to make this work in a different avenue. Let's not go down that same road. Let's get out of that box. Let's break the box open. Let's finger off. That's all I'm saying.
But Bill, we're not opposed to change. I think what, you know
I, I never said you were. I'm just saying, you're taking out of what I'm saying out of perspective.
I know, I'm
I'm trying to say that we need to look that way. We need to look outside the box, you know what I mean? Me included, me included. I'm not, only you, you know?
Okay. No, I, I, we don't disagree with that at all. I mean, you know, there's been thousands of hours that have been volunteered down there for just, you know, um, I did a lot of what Dan does now down there beforehand, so, you know, I, but, but there's a lot of pride in it from
Hundred percent.
And so I, I think what, you know, I put on two hats. I put on the hat of, of my kids being in the program, and why I'm still involved in it is because I have passion for having kids have something to do that doesn't cost the parents a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we've worked really hard to try to maintain those costs over the years and, and run a program that, with all the volunteer help, has been able to do that. I, I just, from the taxpayer's side, I guess I look at it and say, I get concerned when we try to add more overhead costs. So I think, is there a way to find a half medium so that we don't increase the
But you wanna look at it the taxpayer's side. We spent, we spent X amount of dollars to sink a well. We're, we're trashing it. That's a lot of money to say, that's a lot of money.
I agree.
So we, there's two ways. If we either mismanage it and keep doing stuff like that, or we get on board and we all get together. I don't think that was smart money spent down there. I don't. And I understand, has nothing to do with you guys. What happened, happened. I know we can make that work. I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see the taxpayers, even if it's C P C money, spend eighty thousand dollars to draw it out of the, out of the river. I don't think there's any need to.
From my perspective, Bill, on that, I guess what I'm looking at is, I don't wanna see a system that's gonna die in three, five years. I wanna see something that's gonna last for, for a long time. And I think, if you look at how long Penn Tucket's had their system, and the fact that they've not had problems, the fact that they water far more fields than we're gonna water. And so they're, they're really pushing that system, and it's working for them. Um, I, I don't wanna see what, what, over the years, I mean, going way, way back, we've had problems with the wells down there now. I mean, back fifteen years, we've had problems that well. And so, you know, you're down there as, as a parent, and the dust is flying everywhere. You've got no way to knock down the dust in the field in the spring when the winds are blowing across from the river. So I said, I, I've kinda looked at it and said, well, can we put a, a system in place? We've, we've, we've bantered it about as a group. You know, what do we put in that's gonna last us a long time so we're not, you know, as we were talking earlier with the van. Good money isn't being thrown after bad. I, I'd hate to see us spend a whole ton of money on a well finishing it out. I understand it's, it's literally, we can say, sunk cost.
There's a, that system at the high school
Yep.
The system at the high school is run with a twenty-five to twenty-eight thousand dollar generator, accelerator, whatever that
Oh, I know, that's, that's not
That's not, that's not guaranteed for life.
No.
That unit is a five to nine year, maybe ten year unit. It's gotta be, breaks down, it's gotta be taken out, and no one put it
Well, it's a far more robust system than we're looking at.
No, no, but I'm just saying, whatever you put over there is not gonna be over there. It's not gonna stay there for the next thirty years. It's gonna need maintenance, the same as any other thing would need maintenance.
Oh, no, I agree.
You know what I'm trying to say? And, and I, I have been involved in situations, and, and like, you can go to the high school, talk to them. When they first put that system in, it wouldn't suck water. They had to go back, they had to take the, and they had to push it farther out into the river. They had to change the piping. It was a lot involved.
Right.
Over here, we don't know what we got. We don't know if the current's gonna be. All I'm saying is, if it works, and you can, that's understandable. If it's gonna work for you guys, good. I'm just saying, me, as a fixer and a doer, that well down there, I know we can get that well to go. You know, in the well that's down there now, it's the sediment, the sediment is coming around the well point. It's clogging the well point, and that's what's happening. It gets in, it brings it up, it sucks the sediment, it shuts the water off, and the system goes dry. So there's, they have different ways to fix sediment in, in wells. I'm not sure, I don't know what took place. I only been hearing what I hear, you know what I mean? But I won't hold you up all night on this, but, you know.
Sleckman Wood, you had a comment?
Yes, um, I think we kinda went off the rails there. Uh, I just wanted to know, what was the cost of the, the well for the river? Do we, do we know that?
What, do you mean to pull from the river? The original bid that I got working on the contractor was less than fifty thousand dollars, I think, for the whole thing.
It was like forty-six, I think.
That still holds?
That was the whole thing, but the bids we got back were, were ninety-five and
One twenty-four.
Yeah, but they weren't, they weren't very comprehensive.
I mean, I actually, I don't think the initial quote had prevailing wage taken into consideration.
It did not. I don't believe it did either.
So, I think once we had prevailing wage, and it really shot the price up.
Really?
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question, just to go back to your opening statement, Mike?
Sure.
Um, you said you submitted a C P C proposal to finish the project.
Right.
Which project? Are we talking just the irrigation system?
Irrigation, well, the irrigation, the roof, um, and the building of the shed for the irrigation.
Okay, so we're just talking the irrigation system right now?
Yeah, yeah, yes. Good question, yeah. Oh, the playground was a separate bid, yeah.
But that's a separate proposal, yeah.
Yeah, that's, um, so in your estimation, Mike, when do you think these might be done, and how can we help you get there?
Well, I think it's, it's like to, we have to wait for, for approval first of all, right? And then once you have approval, then we, we'd go out to bid.
Right, so they can go out to bid right after town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and then be ready to go, depending on what prices come in for July first.
July first, so in essence, we've missed another season.
Potentially.
So the proposal that's before us is to suck it out of the river? That's, that's what's going before the town people?
Correct.
At a hundred thousand, roughly?
Roughly, yeah.
What did we already put into the existing wells?
Existing wells down there?
It wasn't
Just roughly.
It, it wasn't, it was under twenty thousand, I think, to drill.
Yeah, I was gonna say eighteen was the number that stuck in my head, but I, I didn't look at the numbers.
Yeah, we never, we never got a quote on the pump for the new well.
No.
We never got to that point.
No, the money we've already spent down there is twenty thousand?
Yeah, I'd have to look
I mean, just the well, the drilling part of it.
The well wasn't that much.
All right, so it's not a disaster if we
Anything over a hundred is too much.
It's money spent, but it's not a disaster, right?
But the other hundred grand to put into the, the river draw But the other hundred grand to put into the the river draw.
But but don't forget, that's, John, Mike, that's looking at the well, both, um, the the field that we're trying to finish.
Yeah, I get it.
The softball field, the baseball field and the town.
Yeah, it's gonna do more.
Yes.
Um, but it's still not insignificant funds.
It's not.
And if we had that other twenty grand by not putting it into the wells that aren't working for three years.
Yeah.
When I think, again, I suggested it three years ago to do what Kentucky was doing, that we, it wouldn't be a hundred grand now. It would've been eighty.
Probably.
Not huge difference, but still money.
Are they guaranteeing, are they guaranteeing what we go to town meeting for? Are they guaranteeing it's gonna run all that and town hall? Are they guaranteeing that?
That's the original base we had gotten for it.
Right, but what's gonna stop them? We go to town meeting and then we go out to bid with the thing and they're gonna like, oh, no, this is gonna be a lot different. Was there a plan drawn and everything for that? Or is it all hypothetical?
No, it was planned, scoped out.
There's a, it's definitely a plan drawn for it and everything?
Yep. Well, that doesn't have problems. This is gonna replace.
They put a stainless steel filter in it. It seems to be working fine, I was told.
The one that's there now?
The new well?
The one next to the shed, the one that does the.
Right, the original well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been working. We had it fixed last fall.
Yeah, the stainless steel screen.
Yeah, so it's been working since then.
What happens, the other, it sucks in. With the stainless steel, they don't do that.
Yeah.
And you can back flush. It's called back flushing. So if you have a problem with that stainless steel point, you just back flush. It pushes the silt away, cleans it out and make, you know, run for six months. It, there's a million different ways to to cure the problem.
I don't think this summer we had a problem at all.
No. Monster didn't burn up. I drove by and saw green monster.
And then we've had more rain than we need.
We need, yeah.
So I I guess the end of it all is, we really don't have much to vote on here tonight on this topic. And by all estimation, this isn't gonna happen until next fall. Late summer, early fall. And by all accounts, we'll have missed another season. And we really need to keep the football kids off that field. They're just gonna tear the, all that loom and grass seed you put down, they've.
Yeah, that's just a binder to hold this. It's not really, it's gonna die.
It could be overseeded again with annual and, you know, if we have the kinda wet spring, we've had this fall, it'd probably come up great and we'll hold another year. But we had such a dry start of summer last year, it was hard.
The meeting on the twenty-second, the rec. meeting, what what do you want us to do in regards to talking about management of the parks?
I'll I'll speak personally for myself, just personally, not for the board.
Yeah.
I truly think that we need to be able to get a point person.
Okay.
That's our problem or whatever. You guys still do your volunteering. Do it. Nothing changes.
Yep.
We need a manager point person. That's all, you know what I mean? And if you get a proposal and they go, you guys sit down with that point person or whatever. I mean, that's just me. It's like running a business.
And we recommended a person to you, you would look at it and we'd work on it.
But not only there, that that person might ultimately get involved in something else in town, the Groveland days. I don't know. That's us. We have to have that conversation. I don't, I think the disconnect here is we don't have someone to put their finger on. I mean, Denise is a very busy lady. She does a great job. She does what she can do. You guys go to her. I mean, I think it's at the point where we need to have someone help direct, you know what I mean? That's all.
I understand.
So we'll we'll put that as a point during our next meeting.
Right. And then, you know, as far as the money in it, but I've heard that money going on, you've heard it, everyone. Let's figure a way, do the 501(c)(1) like Bill's talking about. Do that, you know what I mean? If the sign money, we turn it over and we put it in this new account with Denise and and we get that all isolated out, you know?
Quick, simple, easy way two might be talking GBL about incorporating softball under the GBL umbrella so it becomes Groveland Baseball and Softball League. They already have the 501(c)(3) designation. They can incorporate you under their wing as, and I think the Little League chart has allowed them to do that. Um, it might save you a lot of time in the interim trying to get your own 501(c)(3) for your softball organization. And if we could find out who who specifically owns that account, whether it's.
I'll find that out tomorrow.
That would be.
I have a feeling it is under, it was initially, we had a, it's actually Groveland Recreation 500 Club. We had a thing with soccer and the Business Association and us. And we, they had their own 501(c)(3) for that. And I think since then soccer went off on their own. I get a feeling that's the number that's still under Denise.
Yeah, I don't think it's us. I think we checked before because my original concern was that we weren't issuing ten ninety-nines to their vendors and that's on the town. But I think we checked and it was not. I don't know that we knew who it was, but I don't think it's under our tax ID number.
But to your point on Little League, on baseball, are you playing regulation Little League?
Uh, what do you mean by?
Is it, you play a Little League or was it just baseball?
They are now a part of, it's, they're no longer affiliated with Little League Incorporated.
Okay, 'cause we had tried that years ago one year and it only left us one town to play because it was softball, you know? It was under Little League. We could only play Ipswich, so we met the same team day after day after day.
No, right now, the the baseball league that I know.
It's not official Little League.
It's not. They're no longer affiliated with Little League Incorporated out of Williamsport, Virginia. But they do have a regional, it's ITBL, Intertown Baseball League from what I understand, but there's Rowley, um, Newburyport, West Newbury, Merrimack, Georgetown, Byfield, Newburyport, Salisbury, Seabrook. Um, there's quite a few towns. There's ten towns, I believe.
And that's Sterling West Basketball FMU, wouldn't it?
Well, we're USA softball, so it wouldn't work. But that's kinda where softball is, USA softball. So was the Middle Essex Summer League for the for the kids. So that that would be the summer league one.
Yeah.
And that's umpires and everything, so.
I'm just trying to think.
Yeah.
Avenue is to try to save us some time and money in the interim.
And the last point I'll make is, we hired a conservation agent. We have a new town planner. You know what I'm trying to say? Kind of the point, you know what I mean, the point person type thing?
Sure.
I think this is where I'm trying to get you guys to understand where I'm heading. You know, we need someone that you can say the dog poop's fat or, you know what I mean? You don't, you don't get it. We need someone that can help manage, you know?
I'm doing it now.
Right, right.
But we've got the speed bump, so it's a start.
Right.
So do I.
Your head hurts.
Yeah, but you know what? I I know what that place is like in the summer.
Yeah.
It 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 it's a beehive of activity and where cars park, they fly down there and now they won't be able to. And that's gonna save a lot of parents some anxiety and a lot of kids from some injuries, I think. So it's a good thing.
And I'm giving Dan an assignment to find out how he's comparing the young guys.
Good luck. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts and I appreciate you coming in and filling us in. And please keep those lines of communication open so that we know where and when we can help you and how we can help you so we can all get where we wanna go.
Not a bad baseball field, though.
It's a great ball field.
You just can't do the lines all the way down.
It's a great, great ball field. Softball field, too.
Yeah.
So moving right along, we have transfer of ownership of auto repairs, et cetera, for Class II used car dealer's license. Do we have the, um, participants here?
We are here. My name is, good evening, gentlemen, Madam Flurk. Thank you for giving us the time to be here. My name is Joe Edwards, I'm an attorney from Havel. I represent Mr. Roger Kala, who's also here tonight. And he is, uh, opposing approval of the transfer of the license to his business, which would be known as Fast Lane Autos. He has experience in the in the used car sales business, et cetera. He's here with me tonight and he'll be glad to ask many questions and I'll be also happy to do the same.
Selectman Watson, would you like to begin the question?
Well, I'd spoken to him before the meeting and, uh, he just, I asked him about experience. He said he did. He worked for a for an outfit. So you know how the used car business works.
Yes.
And, um, just, uh, one sticking point is with your used car record book. You're familiar with the the filling out route?
Yeah.
You know, you filled that out before?
Yes. The what?
I'm sorry, Selectman Watson, filling out the what?
Uh, it's the used car record book.
I've I've done that before. I I know how it works.
All right. And I think, looking over the other paperwork, uh, just a straight transfer. Uh, I don't I don't have any other, any any other questions. Everything looks to look to be in order.
Selectman Dunn?
Um, yes. Um, so basically, the operation will kinda stay the same the way it is? Nothing really changing?
Yeah, nothing's changed. It's gonna be the same.
Okay. You're not gonna be doing auto repair out of there?
No, only only auto sales.
Auto sales? How about detailing, cleaning? Must be doing that.
I might do my own cars.
Yeah, okay. Signage of state, everything's gonna stay basically the same? Name change.
Everything's gonna stay the same. Signage is settled, it'll be the same.
Yeah, size and all that, but the name will probably change on the side.
Name may change.
Yeah.
He has an LLC known as Fast Lane Auto Sales.
Fast Lane Motors.
Okay.
Fast Lane Motors.
Fast Lane Motors.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any, um, right now, I can't think of any other questions to ask you, but.
We provided all the copies of all this insurance policy.
Yeah, I read it all, yeah.
Photographs of the the lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Selectman Wood?
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, I have a letter from Columbia, Massachusetts Office of Consumer Affairs and Business Regulations, which is basically a a warning letter. Uh, as you're aware, car dealers are required to fix yellow lemon law notices on windows of new vehicles displayed for sale. In case used vehicles displayed for sale to fix yellow used vehicle warning law. Basically, one hundred percent compliance. Um, the previous owner had a seventy-seven percent compliance. Uh, so the state wanted to make us aware of that. Just wanna make you aware that that's the law and you have to make sure you post the lemon laws.
He didn't receive a copy of that, but he'll stop by the clerk's office soon unless they had to to get a copy.
Uh, he can come by. I'm the findings director. You can come by my office. I'll have a copy for you.
Yeah, I mean, whereas changing owners, it's gonna start over, but just that that location received a lower score than the state wants. That was it.
These garages in the back are not on your lot?
No.
Okay. I've read over the material. I don't have any any questions. Everything seems to be in order.
I I gotta follow up.
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
Uh, looking over the paperwork, uh, I I didn't see indicating who's gonna be doing your warranty repair work.
Uh, you mean like the repairs for the cars or the warranty company?
No, your your warranty repair work.
So, uh, I have a paper, listen, the.
Somebody buys, somebody buys a vehicle from you and it needs, uh, you know, warranted, uh, for a certain period of time. Who's doing your warranty work?
I listed a few mechanic shops. Uh, one of them will be, uh, Marcell Auto Works down the street from me.
What's the name? I'm sorry, what was the name of it?
Marcell's.
Marcell's Auto Works.
Okay.
Marcell's?
Yeah, Marcell's Auto Works.
Yeah.
And that that's good, that that's listed on your, I I I'm sorry, I just didn't see it in here.
Um, it's listed on one of the papers, blank papers.
Well, the requirement for the license is to list who's gonna to mention who's gonna be doing used repair. I think I think when we run over that, we listed it.
Oh, okay, all right. I I might have, I might have missed it in this paperwork. I know you would. Thank you.
What's that? Selectman Watson, what's that?
I'm I'm all set.
No further questions? Would somebody, uh?
I'll make a motion motion for passage, uh, to transfer, uh, the license.
I'll second that.
Motion to second any for a discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe.
I just addressed something, Mr. Flurk.
Mm-hmm.
I I received that letter that you're talking about and I called and spoke with them. The vehicles they were talking about are stuff in the back row that are trade-ins that aren't for sale. There's a sticker that's in the bottom of the window that you put on when you knock someone, just says not for sale. So I did speak with somebody at the office. The letter was from December, I believe, or.
Uh, yeah, I don't remember.
End of November. I I called when I got in, too. I asked about it.
Okay.
But I, you should thank them. There's nothing there. It's already emptied. I did it tonight.
No, that's what I thought.
The lot's empty?
Yes.
All at your place.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. That's awesome.
Just don't drive over any turtles while you're on his place.
Give you one to drive for a week or two.
The time do I start working on?
Seven, we're up, we're there. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have change of manager for Cedar Dale Swim and Tennis Club liquor license. So as I understand it, they've had a change of management, uh, after a longtime employee there has retired. So this is simply to change the.
I don't believe he retired.
Hmm?
I don't believe he retired.
No?
Just to clarify.
That's what I was told by this gentleman. Mr. Lapata.
That's not what I was informed.
Wasn't that done in, like, the summertime or what? Didn't the change done in the summer and they just got up to November?
I don't see anyone representing either person.
Nope.
Here at the moment. As far as I know, this is just a simple change of manager.
It is. I will tell the board what I did, um, express to, uh, John Dibble, the president of Cedar Dale, that because this did occur many, many months ago, I'm actually not sure how the AVCC will handle the change of license. They have a liquor license that was in the name of the prior, the previous manager who left, like I say, I think it was May of last year. So I'm not sure if the AVCC will approve it without any issues or if they'll have follow-up concerns. Cannot actually review it until this board acts on it.
I would think that that would have to be gone over the time of transfer with Cory checks and background checks and BBC and all that stuff.
Well, the AVCC has required a Cory check, so they do, they do background checks on the managers. I will say the.
Was a new one, new one done on the new manager?
Mm-hmm.
The AVCC hasn't done, no, that's, that's not. The AVCC has not done anything because you guys need to send it to the AVCC if you act, if you approve it. So once it goes to the state, they will review it. They will do the Cory check. They will, um, I guess investigate the manager. I I will say the one benefit that Cedar Dale has is they are seasonal, so they don't open until May, I believe. So May to September is their season, so if it takes the state a while, they're not operational right now. They're not serving any alcohol. So they currently are without a liquor license because, um, I, we could not prove it as originally presented because it had an incorrect manager. We didn't go through this process.
So it seems like we have to get the ball moving on our end anyway.
True, but they should've came to us in the summer when this change is happening so we could've done that process.
I.
Not six months later. That's my opinion.
Bottom line is, they're not gonna have a liquor license if they don't get it straightened out, right? Coming into this new season, most likely.
Correct. That would be my assumption as well.
Well, it sounds like one of those instances that, uh, they probably didn't realize that they had to, uh, once their liquor license was, uh, approved a year ago, that they didn't, uh, probably fell through the cracks and, uh, it, uh, it happens sometimes. Now, we can get the ball rolling by, uh, approving it and, uh, sending it to the, uh, the AVCC.
So I'll make a motion that we change the change of the manager of the Cedar Dale Swim Club and Tennis Club liquor license.
I'll I'll second that.
A motion to second any for a discussion in the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Okay, moving right along, we have the Cable TV Advisory Board to provide a cable contract update.
Good evening. Tracy Gilford, For Abbott Circle, Chairperson of the Cable TV Advisory Board. Because of the holidays and one of our board members being away, we haven't met for a few weeks. Uh, we will be meeting within the next couple of weeks, then we will finalize, uh, what we believe our timeline will be for our cable negotiating. will be for our cable negotiations. Mr. Chairman, I will expect to be on your agenda for all the board of selectmen meetings between now and the renewal, just to, you know, go over any concerns the board may have and to let you know what we'll be doing. One of the things, I'm not sure if it's possible to have an email made up for the Cable TV Advisory Board, so Groveland residents will be able to communicate with us direct, is that possible?
Depending on licenses, it's typically not a big problem unless we run into licensing issues.
Okay, just, like I say, you know, part of the process will be getting feedback from residents. We will be putting together a survey which will go out to residents.
How about a public hearing?
Yeah, also a public hearing, there'll probably be a couple of public hearings. One of the things I am aware, you know, through Facebook, is looking at problems in certain areas of the town, and I, through you, to the residents of Groveland, would encourage people when they're having problems with our cable provider, between now and contract renewal, to document what their problem was, who they talked to, the date they talked to the people, the problem, because one of the things that we'll need to do is identify areas of town that may have issues. It might just be a single house, if it's a whole street of problems, we need to know that. But we need people to document that and send us a copy of, of their problem. And also encourage people, if they are having a problem with our cable provider or anyone, to report problems to the Cable TV Advisory Board. There's also the Mass Department of Public Utilities and the Better Business Bureau, if they feel they are not getting proper service from our cable provider.
So Denise, is there something that is possible to give the Cable Advisory Board a, like, town email address?
Yeah, I mean, Tracy, you have a town email address.
I do, but I think for the cable board, you know, for continuity, that, you know, I may not be around forever.
Okay, are you still using yours, though?
I have not, I don't know, I'll have to talk to you, I've never used that, I was just made aware by my fire chief that I have that. You know, he told me, you know.
It's been there since before I started here, so if you're not using that, I can get rid of that and create a cable one.
I have not used that.
Yep, then I can create one tomorrow.
But if we can do that, 'cause, you know, part of the thing is we will be looking for feedback from the townspeople, what they wanna see. I do wanna make the, the board aware, they're, and I gotta do a little more research, I was made aware that there is a move from the cable providers, not just our cable providers, but all the cable providers, looking to eliminate public cable access or at least substanti- substantially reduce their support. And that is something that is under review by the FCC right now. I will get you more information on that, I just wanna make you aware, 'cause I was just made aware, so I don't have additional information at this point. I will do my due diligence and find out more information to bring you up to date on that. But there is a move to do that.
But this is a negotiation, right?
Right.
So our move would be to increase a fee somewhere else to make up for that. We're gonna get it some way. You wanna sell cable in our town, right?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know how that's gonna move with the FCC, you know, 'cause there, there was a move a few years ago that didn't go through, the cable providers were trying to not have to negotiate with all the individual towns and cities in Massachusetts. And they were trying to do a blanket, to have the state would negotiate on the behalf of all the towns and cities and actually take a percentage of your, your money.
Yeah, what a surprise. Sure they'll do a bang-up job too.
Yeah, and that did not go through, thankfully.
Wonder why?
For all of us. But that's where we are, where we are right now, so I will ask, be meeting with you again, at your next meeting. I will provide you with a written timeline of what we see happening each month between now and conclusion of our negotiations.
Great. Sluckman Wood, any questions?
Sure. So as far as the complaints from the residents in town, as far as cable outages and TV outages and stuff, shouldn't that have been go- ongoing? Not just to negotiate this contract, but ongoing, so there's years of logging of that information, not just the next ten months?
That, again, goes back to when cable, the cable, town took over the cable. Originally, the cable, cable was operated by a standalone public access. And that public access was shared between Georgetown and Groveland. At one point, Georgetown, you know, and they would just sign over the checks. Georgetown was like sixty-two, sixty-three hundred a year, Groveland was like five thousand a year, 'cause we had less subscribers. At one point, when Groveland negotiated their new contract, we were the first ones that were going to get a big amount of money. The selectmen at that point said, is Georgetown going to match it? And it's like, no, they're a year, or I think two years away from negotiation. So at that point, and Denise, this is part in answer to, to one of your emails. And I apologize for not getting back to you, I had a death in the family and had two close friends die recently, so I've been kinda occupied with that. But we ran the public access, the playback facility was here in Groveland at the police station. The live studio was in Georgetown, originally in their town hall. And then when they built their new addition on their high school, was moved to their new high school, 'cause they had a TV production room. At one point, they ran out of space, so we basically got evicted from the high school. And then, like I say, Groveland defunded the Georgetown, Groveland Public Cable Access. So since Groveland defunded us, the town of Georgetown decided to, we ran for as many years as we could under that, and then the two towns decided to split and go their way and run their own under the government. When Groveland first took over, our finance director and, you know, Chris, who was our cable person, it was decided that they were responsible for the running of the cable. So the Cable TV Advisory Board's only function at that point was the contract and to vote for either repairs or replacement of equipment. So the day-to-day operation was the finance director and Chris.
But your cable committee's been in existence.
Cable board.
Board, sorry, it's been in existence for five, six, seven years?
Yep.
And in that time, you guys haven't taken the process of ongoing complaints and logging them, so you know on a year-to-year, month-to-month basis, how many complaints you get from residents about whatever?
Nope, we hadn't.
Okay. And where did you say you were on the contract, did you guys read it?
Yes, we have read it, and like I say, we are working on a month, monthly bullet list of things that have to be accomplished each month. So in two weeks, when you meet, I will turn that over to you for your review.
Have you talked to the Havel board? The chairman over there, Phil Goo?
No, I have not.
I've talked to him. They've been working on their contract for two years. And what I talked to him about, which might benefit you guys, is just their contract's up in March. It would be just to take their contract and tell Comcast this is what we want. Now Comcast pays for internet, Wi-Fi and internet for their government buildings and their schools, which I think Denise, you paid for that.
Yes, we paid for all of our.
So that could save us money to go elsewhere.
Yes.
Right? Secondly, like I said, they've been working on it for a long time, and I would just say that I would reach out to them as a board yourself to find out how they're going about their negotiations and try to figure back on that. One, that'll save you a lot of time, two, it'll probably do a lot of the work for you and have a better understanding of what Havel's been going through, to make sure that they get what they need from Comcast.
Yep, and I, Mike, I just had wanted to address one thing. One of the meetings that you were a little upset on, I just want to make you aware, you weren't at the last meeting when I, you, you were a little upset about Verizon not being in Groveland. And I just wanted to make, it is not our board preventing them.
Nope, I know that.
And, and because of your comments, some people accused us of, and it's like, it's not us.
No, not you at all.
It's, we, we have, have an open door, we had met with them years ago and had invited them in. Again, our contract with our current provider only says that whoever comes in has to have the level playing field. They have to match the contract.
Yep, yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that it was your fault.
Welcome to public service.
I do feel your pain every time.
And I have.
And the most recent cable bill, our rates went up again.
Yep, yep, I've had plenty of conversations, that was one of the reasons why I reached out to the chairman over in Havel, to find out how their negotiations went, which did not go well. But he is on board with doing whatever he can to jump on any kind of thing that I can get going with the state and files.
And, and I do touch base with the executive director at Havel Community Television, television, at least a couple of times a year, because when I was told by Verizon years ago that Groveland would only be cabled by Verizon as a subsection of Havel, when they did Havel, they would do Groveland. So I touch base with her at least a couple of times a year, and I did make that call a few weeks ago, and I said, is there any move on Verizon's part to do Havel, and she said, no.
No, there isn't, and there's a change that they're planning to do as far as any infrastructure going forward, whether it's Havel or anywhere else, to not do fiber optics down the streets into every household, is to do fiber optics and then do Wi-Fi connections to pods on telephone poles. So that's a little bit of a change, which, if we can have a conversation with them, would limit the cost of the infrastructure, because they wouldn't have to go to every single house, they would just do pods on the telephone poles, and we would then license them access to the telephone poles to do that. But that's a longer conversation, and back to the meeting about me complaining about them not being in town, I have not given up on that.
Yep.
He's still complaining.
I'm still complaining, and I will continue to complain until someone greases that wheel and gets something done.
Yep.
Sluckman, done? Sluckman Watson?
No, I'm all set.
A couple of things, I'm reading over the, the last contract, and where has licensee filed a written request for renewal of its license by letter dated January sixteen, two thousand and seven? This is for a contract that's going to expire in November of two thousand and nine. They look like they started the process two and a half years early. Do you feel like we're behind the eight ball now, starting the process so late in the game, as compared to when they were looking at it ten years ago?
We, we can look at it that way, but that's where we are right now. And as I said before, part of that was fact that we did not have a board, we did not have full membership. After Kenny Hamilton had passed and we lost two other members, it just basically left Ed and I. So that's where we are, we have a board now, we are going to do our best to accomplish what we can in the time that we have and work on the behalf of the town to get what we can.
How many board members you have now?
We have four, and we have one other person that has, I've been told, has stepped up. And I have to contact that person, and I'm hoping that it is a person that wants to serve and that we can get that person appointed too.
So currently you have four, and how many does the, how many is?
Five.
Five, so you need three to have a quorum.
Yep. So like I say, I do expect to be on your agenda for every Sluckman meeting between now and contract renewal.
Now, you made it a point at the last meeting, when you were kinda going on and on, that the license fees are generated from subscribers to cable TV?
Excuse me?
The license fees are generated from subscribers to cable TV?
Yes.
What about phone and internet?
Those are not part of the monies we, we get, it's strictly from the cable part. If you, I believe that's in the contract.
So there's no franchise fee for internet or?
Or phone.
Are you sure?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure, I will check on that and report back to you. But my understanding was that it was strictly the cable part of the bill, period. I will check on that and get back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, because, I guess, it's the language that I'm, grossing, revenue received by the licensee from the operation of the cable system in the town of Groveland for the operation of cable services, including without limitation, to provision of any cable service over the cable system. So any service over the cable system, I would, I would view that, and I would, I, I guess, I would define that as phone is over the cable system, internet is over the cable system, TV is over the cable system. I can't think of anything else, so all these three should generate franchise fees, and I looked at my bill just to make sure, and I did get a franchise fee, and I'm only an internet subscriber. So these franchise fees affect more than just the cable TV subscriber, they have also affect folks that may only subscribe to phone or in my case, internet access, in which case, because I don't subscribe to cable TV, the need to broadcast the meetings on a streaming network is even more important to folks like me who have internet, who pay the fees. I'm getting hit with them just like everybody else, but because I don't have cable TV, I'm shut out to the, to the process. Whereas if it was broadcast over the internet, as we've been trying to get to do for a long time, I would have access whether I was in my home on Elm Park or in the beach in Aruba or in a, or in a Gulag in, in Russia, if they let me in there.
I do, do wanna, just for your information, at our last meeting, we did discuss that, but we were given one price, and then just as we started the meeting, Chris gave me a different paper with a different price. So I said, I was not comfortable at the eleventh hour voting on something that was just given to me, 'cause like you, you know, I wanna have a day or two, you know, why is this changing, you know, you know? So it is something that will be on our agenda for our next meeting, and yes, I, I agree, it's something that we should be doing.
Sure, and I respect that. I just want to, I just wanted to make it clear that it doesn't only affect cable TV subscribers, it affects a larger audience than that.
I'm all for putting the information out there. I am one like you, who I believe cable access is one of the most important things that the town has, and I would never want to give up, because regardless, at one point when we had three news, daily newspapers covering the town of Groveland in a single weekly or bi-weekly newspaper, I would sometimes go to meetings, and you would hear things go on at a meeting, and then people who didn't go to that meeting had to depend on the daily newspapers for their information to go vote on something, it may be a town meeting or a town election. And sometimes I would buy three newspapers, and depending on the reporter or the editor, you would see three different accounts of that same meeting.
And now there's a guy telling us it's all fake news, you can't believe any of it anymore. You better get their horse's mouth.
Whereas I look at the cable access as being the most important, because regardless of, you know, if you and I see the same meeting and still draw different conclusions, at least we had the same information.
Right, well now we know which one of us is crazy.
Right. Right, exactly.
Mike, you want to-
I was just going to say that streaming application would be beneficial to everybody in town.
Yes.
People that just happen to have, people that have cable, that have, you know, direct TV and internet.
People out of the, out of the country or out of the town.
People like myself who travel quite a bit for work would still be able to participate in the meetings, which I want to. The current situation, having six things trying to talk to each other here, it just isn't feasible. It isn't-
And like I say, that will be addressed at our next meeting, and the only reason why it wasn't passed at our last meeting is we were given one price, and we were looking at, you know, a day or two ahead of time. And then that evening, Chris came in, and it's like, oh, it's this amount more, and I'll show you both of the pieces of paper. I don't, don't have an issue, but I'm like, I just don't like everyone else. I don't like somebody giving me something that night and saying, oh, it changed by hundreds of dollars, and it's like, well, why? You know? And it's like-
When is your next meeting?
We'll probably be meeting next week.
I think I'm good. I do have some questions based on the reading of the contract, but I think they're more interpretation-driven than anything else, which I may have to ask counsel to look at and define more clearly for me. But I'm good at this moment. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we have appointment of a board of selectmen member to serve on the Community Preservation Committee.
So that spot was previously held by Lisa.
Right. So who's good at finding frogs and turtles?
Not me.
You a good hunter?
Never hunted a deer in my life.
So maybe this, I don't believe they meet often. Mike, maybe a couple of times, starting January through, January and February? And then recommendations are made. So I don't think it's a lot of meetings, and they'll meet again, I think in the fall, maybe once to recap the projects, but-
Well, it is our lucky day, because Selectman Watson-
I can do that.
... has enthusiastically volunteered, and before he withdraws his name, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Selectman Watson as the, to serve as the board of selectmen member on the Community Preservation Committee.
I'll second that.
Good. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Steen.
I don't blame you.
I can't vote for myself.
Listen, I don't blame you. This way you got an excuse if anything goes wrong.
So Ed, I believe the first meeting is the 22nd. Oh, sorry, the 17th, Thursday, the 17th.
What is that actual, the board do? Like, what's the preservation? I'm thinking preservation, like old buildings or no?
No.
No, I mean, I don't know.
No, they do the projects, CPA. So they get the CPA requests, review them, and make the recommendations to you guys at the town meeting.
Speaking of CPA, can I just quickly jump off the subject? Boston again, and we've talked about this before, Boston is now part of the CPA. They're going to suck up a lot of money, let's face it. Do we know the impact of Groveland on Boston joining this organization, this community? Because, you know, I want to know if it's worth the town, if it's worth the 3% to the taxpayer anymore, if the return from the state is just not going to be there, because the city of Boston sucks up so much of the available funds that we no longer see anything beneficial for our investment?
Yes.
Yes, what?
Mike Dempsey, representing Community Preservation Committee. Yes, that is a good point, because if, right now, currently, I don't know the exact number for this fiscal year, but up until now, recently, we have been getting approximately 58 to 65% return on our funds, which good return.
I'll take that any day.
Yes. But indeed, with Boston, some of the other larger cities that have signed up in the past couple of years, that number is predicted to go way down, depending upon who makes the prediction. But there is, and there has been, move afoot in the state legislature to change the source or at least add additional sources of funding. And every year, they're able to come up with some money, rainy day fund money or some other money that they throw in there, but they're looking for a more permanent source. But, you know, I think frankly, that, you know, if the state match goes away, then we're going to have to realistically look at, do we want to continue it? But we're not there now. I don't know, you know, nobody's really predicted what the exact impact is going to be, but we have to keep an eye on it.
May I just say, fiscal 17, we took in $128,000 from the state revenue, and we just got in fiscal 19, $138,000. So it is still increasing our state contribution. I don't have the percentage, I don't know.
But has our, has our contribution increased therefore that caused that the state to increase their contribution? I mean, it would-
Yes, but it's not decreased dramatically, and I think Boston has been in it now for a year already.
Yeah.
I think Boston, I think last year was the first year they were in it.
And we get, for the last five years at least, we have got the top, we've been among the top 15 cities and towns in the whole state of what we get. So we're doing well by what we get.
We do well.
As far as percentage-wise.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's a better opportunity for that money, if the state funding is going to be so diminished that it's no longer, I mean, what else do we have in this town left to buy that we don't own already?
Well, it isn't so much buying things. That's not, that's not, you know, we have-
No, I know, we did, we did-
Affordable housing.
Washington Park.
Historic, recreation. So I don't think there's, you know, I think we're doing a good job of using those funds, so.
But if the state were to cut back, the funds significantly based on these other larger cities jumping in, if we were to cut back on our contribution and use those funds, divert those funds for use in other places, it may not significantly hurt us that much.
Well, if you could do that, but you can't do that. You'd have to, if you, if you either eliminate CPA or reduce it, you, in order to get those funds to use somewhere else, you're going to have to raise the tax rate. So, I mean, I don't know where you really win in a case like that.
I'll give that some more thought.
You know, but, but as you say, you know, I think we have to look at it, we should be looking at it and watching it. You know, the other idea is that with larger cities and towns joining in, they have more of a say in the legislature and convincing legislators to do some more funding, so hopefully that's the case.
What we should do is, if that is going to change coming down the line, what we should do is try to forecast up what we really need, if it is historic or recreation or whatever, we should really get that online and get a good look at it, so we start heading down and taking care of those projects now.
Yes, yes.
Before we do, if they do do, dip into it.
Right.
I can't believe the administration that's there now is going to let it go away. I just think they're too, they're too town-driven, that our governor and the legislation we have is very town-driven. I don't think they're going to-
I couldn't agree with you more, but there's this really stinky, lousy word called recession that could change the entire landscape of everything we know today.
Hopefully, a couple of good years ahead of us, hopefully.
Well, I'm hoping, but you never know. Thank you, Mr. Dempsey, appreciate. Moving right along, we have discussion to allowing non-residents to serve on Elm Square Committee. I don't even know if this discussion, is this point moot? I mean, we don't have an Elm Square Committee.
So at one of your meetings in November, I think it was, you, as the board, agreed to recreate an Elm Square Committee with a different charge, provided they had volunteers. Mike has volunteered, Greg Stark has volunteered. I've only heard from one other person who is a business owner in the square and not a resident. I've talked to Greg Stark, who said there is interest in other business owners in the square that are not residents. I have informed him that based on the policy that you guys set back in 2016 and amended in 2017, that only Groveland residents shall be eligible for appointment or for service on appointed boards, committees, and commissions. He asked if the board would consider allowing non-residents to serve on this one committee. I told him I would put it before you guys tonight.
I would, I would say, if they were a business owner in town, I would probably consider it. But the point I'm trying to make is, do we need all business people downtown? I thought we were trying to make this more broader outside the town. I wasn't looking just for everyone isolated downtown. Granted, if there's one person downtown that want to represent the business people and they're out of town, I'm good with that, but I don't want to have five people from downtown. I was trying to make it more diverse, that's what I would-
You mean that there might be a tendency to push a commercial agenda as opposed to a residential agenda?
No, 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 no. There's other business people in Groveland. Why don't we include everyone? I mean, even if they, even if it's a landscaper on Center Street or an excavator on Center Street or whatever, you know, I include-
Well, but I think it was an Elm Square-
For the Elm Square Committee.
They only want an Elm Square, period?
That's what you guys agreed.
Well, that's what the discussion is. It's only the, what the former committee was trying to go after, which is no longer-
Right, so this was what you had given the charge. Review Groveland's Historic Business Center, research solutions for lack of parking, investigate ways to increase access to the river, explore methods to improve the look of the square. The committee will provide regular reports with water selectmen and is expected to file a final report with the board two years from the date of initial appointment. So you created, as a board, agreed to an Elm Square Committee, provided there was enough interest to continue it. I think that's where the issue is, is the interest is now in non-residents that want to participate.
As long as they're business people, I say. That's what I say.
Well, I think that goes, I think that goes right along with your proposal to make the town more business-friendly. You were looking before at a, some sort of a committee of business people to tell us what, what their problems were, and I think this, this goes a long way to getting ideas of the business people. So I concur, I think it, I think it's worthwhile.
You want to be elected to a board in town, you got to be a resident. Right?
I'm kind of 50/50 on this one. I understand the business development side, but I also look at the no skin in the game side.
Right, and there's nobody here representing them, so who cares? Let's move on. If it's not important enough for them to come and have a discussion about it, then it's not important enough to have a discussion through there. That's my opinion.
Well, I told them I would bring it to the board.
It'd be nice if someone was here to represent them.
If they were going to, Mike, if they were going to answer a board in town, it would be a whole different story, but if they're, if they're talking about a area downtown and they're business people and they're out of town, but they have a business, they have, you know what I mean?
I get it.
They have an interest.
I think they have interest.
They have interest.
But, but-
But it's a one-sided interest.
I agree, to a certain point.
To a certain point, yeah.
But the fact that the residents of the town don't seem to be interested or have the appetite to even, you know, be part of the conversation of this tells me just about everything I need to know, that the, the town really doesn't have any interest in any of that property or, or there'd be much more, there'd be, there'd be many more names on this list other than two residents and one out-of-towner.
Denise helped me and sent out the downtown business letter that I sent out, and I wrote one of the questions, do you like to come meet? One person said they wanted to come meet.
Right, so we sent out like 200 letters, and we got like eight back.
Right, eight back, and there's one person, said they'd meet on a Saturday to talk about downtown. So, I mean-
So you want, you want to talk about downtown, and there's, for the most part, right at the Elm, based upon the charges that were just read, it involved mostly the business area down there. And so I don't see any problem with letting somebody that owns a business from out of town being on the committee. I think it would, would benefit the town of Groveland. At least the person is interested, they have their business here in the town of Groveland, so they have some kind of an interest. You know, I'm all for it.
I get all that, but when the committee comes back with a solution, the solution's going to have a price tag to it. The price tag's going to have to be borne by the residents and taxpayers of the town of Groveland, not by somebody that rents commercial-
Well, from my look, that even though, even though they're business owners, then they're paying some kind of taxes to the town of Groveland, whether it's certainly, if they're renting space there, do you think that the, that the owner of the building, do you think he's taken that, the taxes from the town of Groveland and taken it out of his own pocket? The person that's renting would, the taxes.
But hopefully they'll, hopefully this, these people will come convene, and they're going to give us information more than, we're going to have the ultimate say if they kind of go through something crazy, you know what I mean? I think we're looking for information from them, weren't we? Wasn't that basically-
Yes, they're just a recommending-
Recommending informational type thing at this point.
Absolutely. They're an investigative body, I think, is more than anything else.
It'd be nice to, if we could get them together, even if, was one of us on that board, on that committee?
No.
Right, so at one point, maybe one of us should be on there.
Lisa was the liaison to the original Elm Square Committee.
So if they want to have someone on, I'd step up, because that's kind of what I was doing, and hopefully we can get them in here on a Saturday, once we get, if they're out-of-towners or whatever, and say, hey, we're going to be meeting at town hall on a Saturday, come on in. And I'll sit down, and we'll do what we can do to talk, and maybe Greg Stark or whoever else is on the other end, we'll, hopefully all get together and have a good conversation. I don't think we'd be, hopefully not talking about spending money or doing anything crazy. What we can do to enhance their business, what they can do to help enhance the town is where I would go with it.
So it sounds like you're inclined to allow non-residents?
I'm inclined to allow non-residents as long as they're business people. If they're not a business person, I'm not, or a rent, I'm not, but if they're a business person, I am, 100%.
So would you care to make a motion to that end, to allowing non-resident business owners?
I will make a motion to allow non-resident business owners to the Elm Square Committee.
Any business owner in town?
Any, why not?
Just asking if you want the Elm Square, I mean, we're talking Elm Square, do you want Elm Square businesses?
Elm Square or any other business.
So any business owner in town?
Right, yeah. No?
I'd rather see it just, just the Elm Square, but I-
But right now, how many business owners do we have in Elm Square? We have Stark, Groveland Banner is out, the preschool is out.
I will, I will change this, keep it to Elm Square, because I think we're getting out of what our original realm was.
Your place and ours.
Your place and ours, the laundromat.
The laundromat.
The hairdresser place behind there, the insurance place, there's probably 10 or 12. The hairdresser place behind there, the insurance place, there's probably ten or twelve.
The flooring place, the back of store.
The flooring place over there, I thought they were going...
What? The flooring place is over there.
Oh, it's the lawyer that moved that.
Lawyer moved that.
Flooring.
Yeah, yeah, that's the left.
Okay, so, so non-resident Elm Square business owners.
Well, I'll second the motion.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
I think it's opposed. You went too fast, I didn't get the vote.
All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? And I'm gonna stand, because I really, I'm torn on this one.
I am too, but I guess we don't...
Well, I will say, you still need enough to come forward to be on the committee, so...
This is true, and we had, the committee was a seven member?
I don't think you, I don't...
I think we did.
I don't think you said it at the last one, but I'll double check. I don't have it on our, I think you're waiting to see how many people came forward, before you decided how many members. So, this will be three. Perhaps Greg has more that he has lined up.
Okay. So let's move right along, we have votes at the board, we have minutes from the November twenty-six, two thousand eighteen meeting.
Those look to be in order, I'll move for passage.
I'll second. Any further discussion? I guess none, all those in favor? Minutes from the November twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen meeting?
Move for passage.
Motion in a second?
So, I'm second, I'm sorry.
Not good, a motion?
A second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
We have open the two thousand nineteen special and annual town meeting warrants.
So it's just a vote we do every year?
We just need a motion to open the...
Motion to approve the opening of the two thousand nineteen special and annual town meeting warrants.
Second.
Motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Vote on the twenty-twenty, fiscal twenty-twenty capital improvement plan, which you should have found in your packet.
So you only have two requests?
Totalling one hundred and two thousand four hundred and eight dollars, one for the handicap van, and one for the replacement line cruiser. Now, that handicap accessible van, we have essentially eliminated. So basically, we're voting on a replacement line cruiser in the amount of forty-four thousand four hundred and eight dollars.
And I will say, in the police department's budget request, the chief is actually recommending leasing that vehicle. I think it's fourteen thousand dollars a year for four years, instead of buying it outright. The financing of it can come later on. If you approve of the vehicle, then we can talk about during the budget process, if you wanna use free cash, if you wanna finance it, how you wanna handle that.
Okay. This changes something for me. What kind of shape is the half-ton four-by-four pickup truck at the cemetery? Because now we have the opportunity to pull that in and still save some money.
Well, but I will say, they did not request it. This is, if you notice, those are plans, those are projects that were submitted in the past. I asked all departments to look at their capital and submit what was necessary. I put them on there because no one submitted a five-year plan.
Nobody.
Nobody, not one department submitted their five-year plan. So I, we need to have a five-year plan based on our bylaw. So I kept twenty-one to twenty, that's why there's nothing in twenty-four. So, no one, other than, I will say, the highway department expressed a need, because they're, one of their dump trucks has been pushed off. But Bob felt he wanted to wait for his replacement to decide what capital was needed. So nobody else submitted any.
And the other thing is, as far as the van, if we left it on there, just in case this report comes back bad, can we do it? Can we leave it on there, just in, once you put it on there, you have to leave it on there?
But we don't have to spend the money, right?
We don't have to spend the money, it's my point, just in case.
I, I guess. I don't know, but the bylaw requires you to have a plan voted by January tenth. If you choose to recommend it, we have to go on to the town meeting warrant as a recommendation of the board of selectmen.
Oh.
I suppose you could amend the warrant right before?
No, 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 no.
I can't imagine...
But it would be listed as a recommendation.
Fifty thousand miles.
That's fine, okay, no problem. I, I know my trucks, I run them up to a hundred and fifty thousand miles. I mean, and I'm in dirt, and in loading them with dirt and whatever. I mean, I'm not carrying people, whatever, but, I mean, that's fine, leave it the way it is.
So nobody had any infrastructure requests, no IT requests, no communications, no, nothing, really?
Well, we just did all that.
I know.
All the communications have been updated, all the IT's been updated.
But these are the things that I was, I would expect to see three to five years down the road, because we all know how the technology...
In the past years, we've given a lot, in the past years, we really have. We've done highway trucks, we've done, we've done fire engines, we've done a lot. So, I mean, one year to be a little light, I don't think would hurt us, because we really have given, for the most part...
It's the IT stuff that...
Oh, I don't know about that.
Grows old quickly and goes out of date, and then out of service, that I always clamored about.
We just did a bunch...
Right, we did, and in the past, I'll tell you, the capital improvements committee frowned upon me giving them IT requests, because they wanted specific dollar amounts, and you can't do that several years out. You need to give estimates, and they wouldn't accept them. They didn't like me saying a hundred thousand dollars for new servers in this, this, and this building. So they frowned upon that, that's why it was just annual requests.
But now the capital improvement committee is no longer with us.
Yes, no, I agree with that, but that's why there has not been any IT requests since my first year here, because they did not like acting upon blanket requests just covering IT-related equipment.
Tried to get them to see the light on that, because that, that technology just rapidly ages.
So again, I don't know as far as twenty-twenty-one, like I, I don't believe the radar guns are still on there for the police department. I don't, I don't know that the pumper engine, I don't think the fire department is supporting the pumper engine, but we needed to have a plan, so I kept the previous, I guess, four out of the five years.
It's all subject to change.
But this is at our discretion, right?
Right, all subject to change.
Even though, even though, so even though cemetery didn't specifically request it, if we wanna pull it into this year, because we have now the space, we could, right, essentially?
We could, I mean, we don't have a court or anything, but I suppose you could move the money.
Is that, is that truck really in dire need?
Yeah, they just had some repair work done on it within the last couple of months, but it, it's tired.
I mean, it seems like we have the money, we have the opportunity.
But the point is, we don't know the specific truck they want or anything, because they didn't submit their request, you know what I mean? You think if they really wanted one, they would have submitted it?
Well, maybe, but it seems that they're just really beginning to get their head wrapped around what they've got. You know, they basically took this over, and, and maybe they just haven't had the...
What's the deadline, Denise?
Ten. Three days from now.
Yeah, well, three days from now, so we can't even have a proper meeting.
Is there any way, oh, you have to, it has to be done in a proper meeting?
You, you guys are the capital improvements committee, so the capital improvements committee is required to vote by the tenth of January on a plan.
Well, there's nothing saying that, you can vote this, and then if you see something on there that you wanna move up, you can still move it up. You don't have to stick, stick to it.
Has to be voted on at a town meeting, though.
You can move it before town meeting.
You guys can do whatever you want.
Then the meeting right now?
However you wanna do it.
My point, my point was, if we had a couple of days or whatever, if we could have got the chairman or got someone from there saying, is this, are the new superintendent, whatever, is this something you can get another year away with, or do you need it today?
They want a lawnmower more than that, but they...
Well, that's what I was just gonna say, it sounds like they need a lawnmower more than that.
He just said that today.
They need the lawnmower more than that.
Right, I agree, and that's my point was...
So, I, it's up to you guys, whatever you wanna do.
Can he put something together quickly, but we have to be here to have a meeting to vote on it?
There's not time, Bill.
Right, we're out of time.
We ran out of time. He's gonna come back to bite these guys in the behind.
Well...
Well, you know what?
You can't run everyone's department, they, she asked for the request, and she didn't get them, so...
I agree.
To Ed's point, we, we can't just vote it as approved, and then remove it later if we wanted to remove it?
You guys can do whatever you want.
Or not spend it?
You can do whatever you want, but not without our bylaw, but you can do whatever you want.
Well, that doesn't make sense.
But you're the board, you can do whatever you want.
Mike, but the point is, is like...
You wanna vote it and move money later, that's fine.
If I was to move it, then do you sit there and say, instead of saying the trucks, say, equipment? That way, if they needed the mower more than they needed the truck, right, you know what I mean? It sounds like they need a mower more than a truck to me, but...
When I met with them to discuss their budget, they needed the mower.
Right.
But they missed, the deadline was November, and they did not submit it. And I've talked to them since then, and they did not submit, so... But they need a mower, I don't know how much they need a mower versus the truck.
Well, a mower can always be fixed, you throw money at it, you throw money at it, you keep it going.
They needed additional mower. They don't need to replace one, they needed additional.
Then if you guys move it...
You're probably talking fifteen grand, it's one of those big fancy cars.
So however you want to move it, whatever you want to do.
I know, I know. You can get a lawnmower for like, how much is that?
Make it a pickup truck or equipment.
Bro, look at me, it's your fault.
Well, you know, in the past, in the past, we've had, we've had five-year capital improvement plans. And even though they've been submitted, the, some of the departments have pulled them out, that we don't need it this year, we'll put it off for another year, so...
And still other departments have gone the opposite way and said, "I didn't need it till next year, now we need it now."
Exactly.
Right, well, I think that's the difference, the plan hasn't changed once it's voted. The article that goes to town meeting is what changes, based on need.
The point, the point is, if you did what Ed said, and you, you said, truck or equipment, it's thirty grand, you're gonna put the thing up to bid anyway, you know what I mean? They're only gonna be able to get what you bid, or what they got the bid for, or what they purchased price for. So they're not gonna go over that amount.
But, but let's, let's play the devil's advocate, you say truck or equipment, and they buy a ten thousand dollar boat...
They go crazy, alright, I, yeah.
You know, they buy a ten thousand dollar lawnmower, are they gonna have the other twenty thousand to spend, however they want?
I get what you're saying, yes, I got you, right.
Taking final approval by this board, is that so fair?
I mean, I would say, if you wanna do that, vote the plan, however you wanna vote the plan, and then you'll vote the article when you know what they have for funding and what you wanna approve.
Right.
Well, that may be a better idea.
Right, yeah.
But the plan, the plan is, like I said, defined by the bylaw, that the five-year plan is supposed to be voted.
Okay.
However you wanna vote the plan, if you're, if you contemplate it, I would move up the thirty thousand into the fiscal twenty-twenty and remove the fifty-eight thousand from the counts on aging, if that's how you want the plan at this moment.
Right.
And then like you do with the fire department, you'd change the radio amount, you... Sorry, did you have a question or an issue? Did you have an issue when I was just speaking?
Well, first of all, we're, we're asking, as far as the van, we don't know whether, whether, until it gets examined, whether we're gonna have to replace it. If the mechanic takes a look at it, and he says, "This isn't, this isn't worth repairing," then we're gonna have to throw that in there. So, I would leave it in there, and you could always move it out.
Okay.
It, it would certainly make sense, if you take it out now, how are you gonna get it back in?
No, that's not, I just thought you'd make a face when I was looking at it.
No, no, I just, I just think it, I, I don't think, I don't think you can do that yet. We don't, we don't know exactly whether it's going to, whether it's gonna work or not. So, if we find out that it's gonna, we can repair what we got, then it's in. And I think it's gonna cost you a little more than fifty-eight thousand.
But the point, the point, the point is, is you'd have to move the thirty thousand over to twenty-twenty. So now we're spending more money than we were gonna go in the gate with.
They can always move the thirty thousand back.
You could. I guarantee they're gonna, if they see thirty, they're gonna want thirty in equipment or a truck, I guarantee you that.
Well, it's not a blank check to spend.
No, but I'm sure they're gonna want what they keep, they're gonna want something.
Well, it's gotta go to a voter of the townspeople in there.
I'm really sorry I started all this, they didn't ask for it, you know what, forget it. You know what, they didn't ask for it, they didn't really care enough to ask for any of this money.
Right.
I'm trying to give it to them, I'm not Santa Claus, forget it. You know what, vote the plan as is, I agree.
So I'll make a motion.
Please.
To accept the FY twenty capital improvement plan as stated.
Second. You have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Oh, goodness gracious.
You mean the five-year plan, right?
The five-year plan.
The plan, the plan, the plan that's in front of us. Now we have to say, all in favor?
Okay, so for a discussion, all in favor, great. Sorry I ever started that, never again. You know, I should know better.
And I will, if they need the mower more than the truck, is what I'm getting texted right now, so... They don't want the thirty thousand for the truck.
Thank you, watching the show, I've been watching the show, thanks.
Would have been more helpful in November. Just saying. Next, they accept the resignation of Jacob Wallace from the Groveland Police Department.
I'll make a motion, we accept his resignation.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
We get the time crunch with family, and you work schedule. I mean, good people go.
That's what I thought, I'd just let it go.
I hate to see good people go, sorry. Still on Novocain.
All those in favor? Terrific. Vote to approve and sign Jerry's Variety Fifteen Elm Park Package Store Wine and Malt License. Approval received from the state on January second, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve Jerry Variety Fifteen Elm Park Package Store Wine and Malt License Approval Received from the state on one twenty, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? I have been getting reports of shenanigans, I don't know how to put it. Have we, has that been looked into?
Yes.
Depends on which shenanigans you're referring to.
What I'd be talking about without trying to, without trying to give away...
Well, so if you're referring to the selling of CBD edibles, that has been discussed and addressed. If you're referring to the sale of alcohol to possibly underage minors, that's being worked on. So those are the two issues I am aware of, if there's other issues, feel free to let me know.
The latter was my bigger concern at the moment, I've heard that.
I've heard that as well.
And did not make me happy.
And I will say, regarding the other matter, we were told that there are other establishments in town selling as well. So the police are canvassing all of our package stores to ensure that that's not...
And variety stores.
I kinda led that, I hope you don't mind.
No, no, now, the CBD, is that, I've been reading up on that, this, some CBDs have zero THC, so there's, there's no... What is the, what is the law on that?
One and a half to three percent of THC in CBD oil. It's approved in fifty states throughout the United States. It's one hundred percent legal, I don't know if we can sell it, I'm just saying, I looked into it. And you can't get high, you can't get any families from it.
So if it's under the threshold, is it really, does it really...
All I know is, I read into it, and it's, that's the deal, it's...
Yeah, so did I, and that's what I kinda scratched my head.
It's approved in fifty states, it's approved to be sold, I don't know what our bylaw is, but most towns can sell it, and it only has between one and a half to three percent of THC in it.
Well, we voted not to have any recreational marijuana at all in town.
Right.
I'm not sure that even qualifies.
It might not, but that's what we voted on.
So I don't know if that's considered, it's a byproduct of hemp, not...
Yeah, I can call the Cannabis Control Commission and see what their take is on it.
Yes, even get a better definition on that, because...
The reason is to even have it, why even sell it if it doesn't give you any effect?
Because people use it for arthritis.
Yeah.
People use it for anxiety, people use it for...
So it does have an effect?
Nope, 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 it doesn't make you high, it doesn't make you anything, it's, it's, it's...
It may be placebo, according to the FDA. But now that the agricultural bill has been signed, they can now do the research into the hemp to find out what are the qualities it may have. But the CBD is basically derived from the hemp plant, which has a very low THC content. And according to some people, and it's not confirmed nor denied, it can help some people with certain chronic illnesses or pain. But the FDA says you cannot, none of these companies can claim that in any kind of advertising, because none of it can be supported yet with clinical scientific evidence.
And I think the concern here is they're being sold as dummies to kids.
And also, also, if there's a problem at the Potter Creek High School, the way they say there is with the.
Jewels.
What's that word when they smoke?
Vape.
What is it, vapor?
Vaping.
They say that in a vape form, it's like worse than a cigarette form. So, and I know I would have been in a couple of stores in Groveland, I've seen them selling pipes and stuff now, so.
I've seen the candy cigarettes make a comeback too and I just don't understand it, I just can't understand that.
I'm talking about actual pipe pipes, in, in, in the stuff for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've seen that. But they, you get the kids hooked with the candy cigarettes.
Oh, yeah.
They can't believe they're back.
Wow, wow, all I know is.
So we have a motion and a second. Guess there's any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay. Moving right along, we have older unfinished business, Selectman Watson, would you like to take the lead on that?
I, I can't think of anything.
Selectman Dunn?
Let me assign this real quick. Okay, under old business, I had talked to Denise earlier, it sounds like we have a few candidates for the road commissioner job in. Under old business, we passed at the annual late town meeting that we can go ahead and now have a, a count, revolve an account to put the money in, so I'm going to go ahead now and proceed with my sign sales, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to come back to you guys with a size of the sign, cost of the sign and all that good stuff before I even go to try and sell them. So I'll come back with pricing, the size, what cost, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll, I'll take care of that in the next, with the next couple of meetings. Under old business, old business. Under the fire department consultant, I guess they're getting ready to come back before us again?
They're getting ready to, they're finalizing their report. I spoke to him last week and he was waiting on some data from the fire chief. So they will have a report hopefully this week.
Okay. I already talked, we already talked about the CTC project behind, we talked about, okay, that's it, I guess.
Okay. Ms. Selectman Wood?
Old business, I'll defer till next meeting.
Okay, you'll pass.
Pass.
I will also pass and reserve my right to bring it up at the next meeting. Other items not reasonably anticipated at time of posting, we have none. Selectman's reports, Selectman Wood, anything to report?
Yep, I am heading to the State House Thursday for lunch with Senator Tar and other state reps for conversation about Verizon and cable in town. And on the twenty-fourth, I am meeting again with Senator Tar about the Superfund site on Washington Street. To find out what the state claims is ours and what is or is, or what can and cannot be done with that site. That's it.
That's it? Why are you there?
Yeah.
I understand.
Sure.
That the state has a tremendous surplus.
Of what?
Money, cash, green stuff.
You want that in tens and twenties or?
Yeah, and, and this governor, Governor Baker intends to use, do it, education. Tell him he can start with Penn Tucket, I heard, what, he had just got a nice half a million dollar grant? He was, visited the school last week.
Did your dental program?
Beautiful, oh, yeah. So, you know, we could use some of that money, education is definitely a great place to spend it, let's start here in Penn Tucket and show what that money can really be used for and how well it can be put to use. That'd be great.
Ask about that.
While you're there, just keep ringing that chain, shaking that tree.
I won't let him leave the office until he gives me a bag full of cash.
There you go, I'm going to shake some money out of these people if it kills me.
They are planning, in the initial report, they are planning to fund regional transportation at a higher percentage to get it closer to the state law requirements, so I know they are committed to increasing several of the educational state aid items.
So they've committed themselves to, to, to following the law, is that what you're saying?
Not quite, but close to, they're working on following the law.
So what kind of guarantee is that from a politician, from somebody you elect? You're going to almost promise us that you'll follow the law? So if anybody else out there, we'll promise you we'll almost follow the law, how many of us would be in jail, right? Thank you, great, Beacon Hill, you're doing a great job, keep it up. Selectman Dunn?
Selectman reports? I just pretty much did it.
Selectman Watson?
No, I'm all set.
We haven't had a, a meeting for quite a while, our next meeting for the new high school building committee is tomorrow. I will not be in attendance, I am going to watch my boy play basketball in Rockport and I'm not ashamed to say that, it's, I miss that game, I miss it for life and I'm not prepared to do that. So I know we'll have a very qualified representative sitting in that room, looking out for all of our interest, I feel very good. Correspondents, we have minutes from the December tenth, two thousand eighteen, we have Penn Tucket Regional Agreement, and we have a Penn Tucket Regional School District Draft Contingency Plan when the high school fails. Director's time.
Yes, so just quickly on those items though, so those are really in anticipation of the meeting we will be having later in the month with the other two towns, it'll be the three boards of selectmen, the three finance directors slash town manager and the superintendent of schools to discuss the contingency, contingency plan and the high school project, so that everybody's on the same page and you can ask your questions at that time.
The venue been determined for that yet?
I believe it's going to be at the high school, but we haven't been formally informed.
It was a TBD at the time.
Yes, so it'll be six o'clock on the twenty-fourth, I believe it will be at the high school, but I'll let you know as soon as I, I'm actually meeting with the superintendent tomorrow morning, so, and the other two finance director, town managers, so I'll let you know when I hear more information. Just a couple.
So we have a finance director and town managers going?
Yeah, so, well, West Newbury has the town manager, we, Merrimack and Groveland have the finance director, so the three of us are going, we just have the different type.
Your counterparts.
Yes. Just a few quick things, I would like to thank Jay Culbert from Three Rocky Woods Road for donating a four-foot tall cookie cutter holiday decoration to town hall, we had it out in the lobby, he brought it in last month, and we got a lot of compliments on it, it was a great addition to our holiday decorations. I would like to thank Laurie Berzlaaf, who's been doing our minutes for the last year, she completed her work with us in December, so I would like to welcome Catherine Ingram, our new minutes clerk, who is taking over starting this evening. Hopefully she gets the hang of it, she wasn't sure how it was going to work out with you two, but hopefully it'll work and she'll stay with us. And I just wanted to give the board an update on the town survey that went out, we have taken in about a hundred and fifty of them so far, and the bills have only been out a little over a week, so they are coming in. So I, I created a database and are entering that information in the database and we'll have that for you after the tax bills are due and we collect through the month. That's all I have.
Terrific. Selectman's time, start with you, Selectman Wood.
I don't have anything.
Selectman Dunn?
Yeah, I would like to see if the board would let me look into the Washington Street ex-highway department building, whatever, possibly partly vacated building for the water department for future use. Just do a little exploratory, looking around, see what might take place or whatever.
I absolutely have no problem with that.
The, the, the old water department highway building?
Yeah.
Doesn't need to be an agenda item, or can we just say, yeah, go ahead? Knock yourself out, kid.
All right, and then we're into select things. I think that was it for now. I think that's it, we talked a lot about it with the, with the rec, I just think with the rec, I think that the rec, I get what they're saying and what have you, I just think that we really need to look in the direction of some more management. And I understand the frustration over the years of money and what have you, there is a way of getting that taken care of and also trying to possibly get some more management. I don't think Denise has the time to be running CPC projects down there and, and I think we also have to have someone that has the ability to overlook those projects, they can run them, but we really should have someone that can overlook it all, in my opinion, maybe the new superintendent will do it, the highway superintendent.
So my only concern on all of that is the scheduling of the fields, I don't think it should be the recreation committee scheduling the fields because we have.
No, I don't, I didn't.
We have other groups requesting it, and I think right now, it comes through me and it's really first come, whoever requests the fields, I go in and schedule them accordingly. I just don't think we should have one specific group handling that type of.
No, I don't mean a group, I mean a point person, like a.
Right.
I think that responsibility is, is, is good with you, I think what Bill is getting at is you don't need to call every five minutes, can I get the grass cut over here?
Right.
Just sprinkle a head over here that's down, there's a.
Right.
But even if it's, maybe the new superintendent that we hire, we morph part of his position into doing that kind of stuff, if he has enough knowledge about building and what have you, when we hire that person, we, we give him that charge.
Yeah, I, in the job description for the highway superintendent, it says facility maintenance, I added fields in there, so I mean, that is part of the job description.
Right, so I think we morph away.
Right, and she's just handling the scheduling of the field so there's no conflict.
I, I get it, no, a hundred percent, I understand why, if not, you'd have a mayhem.
Oh, yeah.
Right, I get it.
Yeah, and everything else translates off her plate, I agree with you.
Right. Well, on, on the same token, if you have a CPC project, I don't think she needs to be going out there checking on the CPC project, I mean, it's not her, her job is to write up the description, get a bid, but not run it, you know what I mean? So hopefully this new superintendent we get will handle that.
Selectman Watson?
No, I'm all set.
I'm all set, I did get my trash finally picked up, only took four calls, but, no, I only took two calls, three calls.
Did they come out Friday or Saturday? No, that's going to Saturday.
Saturday about two in the afternoon, two days late. In my street was the only one, go figure.
What do I?
I know, huh?
So motion to approve it.
Motion to approve.
Approved, adjourned.
Still in the midst.
I approve the leave.
Second. All those in favor?
Yep.
Adjourned.
What are you going to do to building on Washington Street?